I have not seen any one of them yet. The lady told me that her sister or her aunt was gonna be here tonight to accept it. If they're not here, I guess I can accept it and then take her and tell her to.
You want me to, you want us to read it each time?
Yeah.
Okay.
There, that's the way we would obviously shoot.
Hey, the mic's alive.
Is the pastor?
Yes.
Is the pastor here?
Yes.
Yes.
In the white shirt with the tie.
Steve, you got the.
In the white shirt with the tie.
It's been a while.
Yes, yes.
It's been Monday. Been Monday off.
Not the pastor who came. Yeah. My, uh, our kayak came off the top of my car three times. Like, not off. Yeah, we were on the top of my car.
We're reading it anyway.
If nobody shows up and pull over and redo.
Did you have it on a rack?
No, we don't have a rack. We just had pads.
Oh, God.
But it's, it's a black band, so we get. For me. So I'd have to, like, re tighten it up, you know?
And that, and that, what, two, two hour drive, hour and a half drive?
About three, about three. Cause this is way north Georgia, you know, much the last twenty miles.
For me, too. You can do it extemporaneous.
Um, we put all four of us in there, but I mean, it's a three-year-old, six-year-old.
No, no. I've seen two of them. I've seen you.
Wow. That sounds like such fun. It's amazing how getting wet changes the whole.
Yeah, and, and the, the Toa isn't that cold, like the, like the Nantahala is, like, freezing cold. And like, the Oconee is cold, but like, Nantahala's not bad. I mean, it's not warm. Like Such is, no, it's in North Georgia. So like between Blue Ridge and.
It's been, like, it's been pushed. They don't take it.
I took four of, so I put the names of the places for her birthday when we went to White Water Ranch. And the boat, I mean. The guy, me, her, my son, and the guy, we were four of us, and we ended up all being a certain size. Of course, he put us off.
Yeah.
The whole time I was just like, like, no. If he got turned off.
Yeah, the first time you're always like.
Yeah. Am I gonna roll over and get my face this way? Okay, which is him.
You're awesome, Rita. All right, Mr. Chairman, you're up.
I know it.
Here we go. Good evening and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners extraordinary session. It is Monday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, at about six P. M. I would request that you please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I would like to ask Pastor Ronald K. Adams of Arcadia Missionary Baptist Church to deliver the invocation, followed by Commissioner Rita Johnson, District Three, to deliver the pledge, the flag.
Shall we pray?
Yes.
Oh, Lord, our strong and mighty God, the Creator of the universe, the Creator of all mankind, how we thank you for the gift of life, for the love you show toward all of us, your handmaid. Tonight, we also thank you for this group of elected officials and others who have been blessed with the opportunity to serve the people of this great county and community. Having been given this opportunity, I humbly pray that you will forever keep them with the request that Solomon had in his heart, to seek to know divine wisdom, that they may lead in a manner that would be pleasing in thy sight. Help them not only tonight, but always to serve with humility, to serve with fairness, to serve with love, to act with character and conviction, to help them to listen with understanding and goodwill, and to speak with clarity and restraint. Oh, God, our Father, let them be forever mindful that they are but stewards of your authority, and may they see the humanity and dignity even of those who disagree with them, and be able to treat all persons, no matter how rich or how poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. Finally, oh Lord, especially during these alarming and challenging times in our community, grant unto them and to all of us your favor, your love, that they and the community at large might be unified for the good of the land. But most of all, Lord, we conclude this prayer, humbly asking that thy will be done, on earth as it is done in heaven. In that name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Pata. I appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. This time I'd like to amend the agenda to lift from the table a recommendation from the Park and Leisure Service Advisory Commission on a task order form to perform an engineering study of locations and determine the cost of possible pickleball court expansion. Do I have a, I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second discussion. Pickleball is a huge return on investment.
Where are you gonna put it on?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
You're amending.
And I would like to put it on the new business number twelve.
And, and just, you said lift from the table, but I think we're amending the agenda.
To lift.
Yes.
To include lifting.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Don't, don't mean to get pedantic.
No, no. I wanna, we wanna do it properly. Thank you for that.
Okay, so you're lifting it and.
No, I'm making a motion to change the agenda.
Right. To change the agenda for where? Under.
New business under twelve.
Twelve, under twelve. All right, thank you.
All right. All right.
I'll look for the question.
I have a couple of comments for discussion at this point.
Did we vote yet?
No.
Okay, now, that's right. Can we call for a question?
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, unanimously, Carrie, thank you. We have now changed the agenda to add an item number twelve. Thank you.
I have fourteen.
He does, he put it as twelve, Eddie.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Okay.
All right. All right.
Consider presentation of courthouse portrait to, for recognition to Tim Crane's retirement from the Public Works Department after twenty-seven years, Dr. Ledbetter?
Mr. Chairman, we're going to move that item to August the first, uh, so that we can recognize Mr. Crane in person.
Okay.
Do we need to table it, or no action?
No, it's just a question.
It's a proclamation.
All right, thank you.
Item number two, for those of you that this is the first time, if you haven't been with us before, I would suggest that you try to see what's on the screen. It is, uh, exactly what's in front of the commissioners, and you'll be able to keep up with us where we are as we go through. Item number two, consider a proclamation recognizing the Louis and Mary Stinson family reunion scheduled for July twenty-ninth through thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read the proclamation. In recognition of Louis and Mary Stinson Family Reunion Day, whereas descendants of Louis Miller Stinson and Mary Kendrick Stinson will be uniting for the first family reunion in Griffin, Spalding County, Georgia on July twenty-nine through thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. And the theme of the twenty-two family reunion is "Our Stinson Roots Run Deep, Our Love Runs Deeper." And ancestral research, uh, threads of the Stinson and Kendrick family, uh, families date back to the eighteen hundreds, and Louis Miller Stinson and Mary Kendrick's Stinson Union was blessed with nine sons, John, Albert, Isaac, Jody, George, William, Douglas, Alance, uh, Louis Miller Junior, and four daughters, Elizabeth, Annie, Lithia Bell, and Suzie, were raised in the Griffin, Spalding County areas. And descendants of Louis Miller and Mary Stinson, known and unbeknownst, will be traveling to Griffin, Spalding County, Georgia, from throughout the United States to join local family for the first reunion of Louis Miller and Mary Kendrick Stinson. And it is altogether fitting that the entire community join in joyful celebration of this significant event in Griffin, Spalding County, Georgia. And now, therefore, I, Clay Davis, Chairman, Spalding County Board of Commissioners, the county homes, schools, and places of worship do hereby proclaim Saturday, July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two as Louis and Mary Stinson Family Reunion Day.
There is family here.
Sorry, there is family here?
There is Stinson family here.
Okay, please come for, no, please come forward. We'll get a photo?
Yeah.
I, I make a motion to approve the acceptance of the proclamation.
Second, all right, I have a motion, a second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand.
Sorry, we jumped against each other.
Tell me we can't do it on the move. All right, one of you gets to stand up here with me and hold the thing, and if y'all will get around, we're gonna have a picture taken. Okay. All right, are we lined up okay?
Are you good?
Congratulations. Presentation of financial statement. Consider approval of the financial statement for the twelve months ended thirty June, two thousand and twenty-two. Ms. Garrison, welcome.
Okay, these are unaudited financial statements, and we will continue posting transactions back into fiscal two thousand and twenty-two until, through the end of this month. So, um, the amount of revenues over expenditures that you see on this report will change.
Okay, it will decrease.
It will decrease, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the, uh, financial, uh, statement for the last twelve months as presented.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, four zero, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Garrison, we appreciate it. Citizens' comments. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting, provide their names, addresses, and topics they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your remarks to the board and not to individual commissioners or to the audience. Personal disagreements with individual commissioners or county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speaker will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend the rule.
I believe we have a few who have signed up that are actually coming later in the, uh, the agenda, so, Ms. Ainsley, we're gonna wait for you. Um, Mr. Sean Fleet, we're gonna wait for you as well, is that all right? Or did you have something else that you wish to talk about? All right, um, Cara Jones? Carol Jones, all right, thank you. If you would, please step forward and state your name and your address, please.
Carol Jones, sixteen eleven Pine Brook Drive. I have a couple of things, I think I can get them in within the, uh, three minutes. The first is about animal control. I've just recently learned that the program that we had with Auburn for stray dogs and cats to be transported over there for the procedure of spay and neuter before adoption to the public has been discontinued, I'd like to find out why. I see the shelter message out there has information about discounted rates on microchips, sterilization, rabies vaccination, from the Help Spay and Neuter. I don't know if that's voluntary or mandatory, I couldn't determine from what I reviewed. I know a lot of people love animals but are struggling with inflation and may not be able to do so now. The shelter site refers to being super full and currently overrun with animals, so I don't know what the plan to do for that. The two thousand and twenty-one annual report shows that this is a no kill, kill shelter for our county. My understanding, it has been a low kill shelter, so I don't know when that changed, and I don't know what happens when we have, possibly have mean or vicious dogs at the shelter. The next issue that I want to, to bring up, comment, is about the position itself, Spalding County Marshal Position. I could not define out there, anything I looked at, if that's now open to the public for filling this position. Public information that I found about this position that we've recently filled refers to code enforcement, county code, zoning, environmental ordinance, building codes, allows, allowances, code compliance notices, official correction notices, on and on. And in addition to seeing over animal control. I don't find anything that lets me see, are these positions departments currently short-staffed? Why do we, uh, need that position? The question is, not that I'm asking the annual salary, but I know that the annual salary should be in the local budget. I refer to the, uh, the one that just ended, uh, and the one that's, uh, coming up for the, uh, fiscal year beginning for, uh, July the first. Uh, that I would perceive to be an expensive item, because when you've got employee benefits in addition to salary, sometimes add up, in the private sector, there's twenty-five to thirty percent more of that that's added to that, and this person would have a vehicle. So I hope that we can truly afford that in these times where people are struggling with gas and other issues, but I don't know how to find that information. That's what I, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Okay, thank you.
Brenda Anthony? Ms. Anthony, if you'll state your name and your address, please.
Good afternoon. My birth name's Brenda Anthony, I live at one seventeen Sunset Strip in Griffin. My problem is with it, is the, um, dirt road that we live on, there's people parking cars, and if there's a fire or someone needs an ambulance, I live at the end of the dirt road, can't nobody get through there? Because cars is parked on the side, cars is parked in front, and there's no way to get through there. And the, when they scrape the road, the scraper can't come to the end because they have the cars and the road. So, that's my decision.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anthony, appreciate it.
Lynn Lowry?
Will you get with her about that?
I will. That's, that's, yeah, that's bigger.
Prepared a written statement, can I pass this to the board?
Yes, if you can.
And some of my statement involves the task order form that was tabled and now has been lifted off of the table and added to the agenda, so I've already stricken some of that information from my statement. Um, my name is Lynn Lowry, I reside at sixteen oh seven Oakview Drive in Griffin. I've been a Spalding County resident for thirty-six years, and I'm the current president of the Spalding County Pickleball Association. As you all know, this will be the second year in hosting the Association of Professional Pickleball Players Atlanta Metro Open Pickleball Tournament. In addition to being one of the top prize payout tournament stops in the APP Tour, the AMO is also one of only six stops that offers USA Pickleball's Golden Ticket designation to the U. S. Nationals Tournament. The special USA Pickleball designation is an absolute feather in our cap in terms of national recognition. It is this national recognition in the pickleball community that draws out-of-state players to our tournaments, as well as drawing people to play recreationally. However, the Golden Ticket designation will most likely not be awarded to us in two thousand and twenty-three. Throughout the SCPA's relationship with the APP and USA Pickleball, we have been advised that while our facility is unparalleled in terms of design, features, and our tournament hosting experience, our facility needs more courts to be considered a host site for larger national tournaments. Most national tournaments are now attracting a thousand-plus participants. The SCPA has made it known via communications with some of you, as well as with influential Parks and Leisure Services employees, what the advice of these two prominent national pickleball organizations has been regarding the need for additional courts at the pickleball facility. The SCPA presented the idea of court expansion to the PLAC and was advised that in order to create an accurate cost estimate, a geotechnical study must first be conducted at Tyus Park. What the SCPA needs everyone in decision-making positions to understand is that pickleball is not just a game with a silly name played by an exclusive demographic of people. The facts are, pickleball has been the fastest-growing sport in the United States for the past two years, with an estimated four-point-eight million total players in two thousand and twenty-two. There is an ongoing international effort to make pickleball an Olympic sport, and pickleball has undeniably brought sports tourism to Spalding County. In order to capitalize on this unprecedented time, we need to collectively agree and support continued expansion of pickleball in Spalding County. With this commitment, there will be a guaranteed return on investment, as we have a proven history of six years' worth of hard facts and data to support that. The number of participants of the sport is increasing exponentially, and we need to continue to prove to the nation that Spalding County is serious in our desire to stay relevant to the growth of pickleball. Any delay in expansion, no matter how inconsequential, only winds up costing something else over the course of time. You need only look at the situation we are in now with the likely loss of USA Pickleball's Golden Ticket designation to understand this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larry.
Chiquita Farley Johnson?
She was here for the presentation.
So you're not wanting to speak this evening?
No.
All right, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for all that you did for the city.
You're welcome. Thank you. And Gerald Stinson also didn't want to speak? All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, that's all the speakers we had signed up for this evening.
All right, thank you. Item number seven, minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the Spalding County Board of Commissioners extraordinary session on June twenty, two thousand and twenty-two, and the Spalding County Board of Commissioners Special Call Meeting and Zoning Public Hearing on June twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, a second, and discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, four zero, motion carries, thank you. Item number eight, consent agenda. Consider on the second and final reading an amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances, Division I, Laws of Local Application, Part Two, Governing Administration, Chapter Twelve, Code of Ethics, repealing conflicting ordinances and parts thereof, and restating the code as modified by this ordinance. Dr. Ledbetter?
I'd like to turn it over to the county attorney at this time.
This is a second reading, um, we did make a couple of corrections. Um, one at section two, twelve, zero, zero, two, we added in definitions that conflict of interest is defined as set out in chapter twelve A.
Chapter twelve A, is that on here?
Which is the conflict of interest.
Okay.
Section.
Oh, I see it.
And...
So you, you edited that portion to clear up our, our concerns about having contractors also serving on?
And in, in the conflict of interest, um, section, which is chapter twelve A, I added the language, um, which the covered official, employee, contract employee, or independent contractor, um, so as to cover all of those categories that we had discussed in the workshop, and also added that to, um, section two, twelve, zero, zero, four, A, in compatible services. So now that language is no covered official, employee, contract employee, or independent contractor, just to clarify.
Help, help me understand further, so, w-. So, a, a, a contract employee, so if we were contracting with somebody in the bathrooms, they couldn't sit on a board? Right?
No, well, so the language is no covered official shall acquire or maintain an interest in any contract or transaction if a reasonable basis exists that such an interest will be affected directly by his or her official act or action, or by official acts of the county, which the covered official, employee, contract employee, or independent contractor has a reasonable opportunity to influence, except consistent with the disclosure and extension provisions.
So the contractor who cleans the bathroom could sit on the parks and rec board? Because that doesn't?
There would be, right. There would be no, um, reasonable opportunity to influence.
So to add on to that, with that same contractor sitting on the park and rec board, with, if there was a facility that actually came out from the park where they needed their services, they would not be able to do it?
All right.
Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, that's correct.
Okay.
So, so, as, well, hmm, what if, what if the county, not the park and rec board, hired the janitor, extended their contract just, instead of just being here, to being cleaning the bathrooms at Tyus Park? It wasn't his department, like, it wasn't their board's decision to hire that janitor?
Well, their board doesn't hire and fire anyway, but, but they would not be able?
Let's say hypothetically.
No, that person would not be able to serve on that board.
Wh- wh- why not, where would the conflict be coming from?
Well, I mean, because they're involved in that board and at the facility, I mean, there's a, arguably, there's some, there could be a reasonable opportunity to influence. I mean, it's a stretch.
It's, it's an extreme stretch.
With this, with, with this hypothetical, it is, it's a, it's a stretch.
These hypotheticals exist here in town, and they're, that's an extreme stretch, and so I'm not comfortable with this wording, because it's an extreme stretch. And people would argue that those extreme stretches should be made here, there, and yonder, and so...
Well, it's up to this board to make. Well, it's up to this board to make that extreme stretch or not.
Hence why I'm, hence why I'm opposed to this. I, I, I don't think that that definition is quite where we want to be.
That sounds like exactly what I thought we were gonna do. And, and the reasoning...
It came from the, I, I did go back and actually watch the workshop, and it is, it, it came from the direction that was given at, at the workshop on this ordinance.
Okay. Because I, I was very specific on not wanting... It's a conflict of interest if I can make a decision to contract with myself or my loved one or my wife or something. But like, if I'm not making a decision, then I'm not conflicted. And I, I don't see why we should stretch to say... I mean, there's only so many people that live in Falls Creek.
Well, there's, there are the recusal provisions, of course, that...
Okay, so that person, following our hypothetical here, that person could continue to sit on that board so long as they made no decisions to contract with themselves for... Okay. It wouldn't just blanket discount them because there was a contract with the county?
The, the language is not a blanket discount for, for anyone, including you, because it, it has that reasonable...
So if I, I served on a board, and that board needed to hire me to be a nurse, and I also could make money off of my relationship with them, that is what the problem is. And I think that is where our citizens are saying that the transparency is blurry.
Because that provides you with the opportunity to, to influence.
Right. So, so you can either have a choice to do business with us or not serve on a board that you would have the right to vote on where you could be actually getting your business voted on. I mean, that, that's, that's, that's what I was trying to keep us from having happen.
That would, that would make sense, following the hypothetical, if the Parks and Advisory Board voted to pick their own janitors. But if this board, or, you know, a non-subordinate board chose the janitors, or if TJ chose the janitors or something, like, that person, because they happen to be a janitor, shouldn't be discounted from being on that board. They didn't make any decision towards our stuff.
But if they're in a position to make decisions that will benefit them financially, then, yeah, then that is the problem right there.
The, the, the idea the conflict only exists once the conflict exists. We're all in a position. We could tonight vote to contract with ourselves for various things. We, that, that hypothetically exists. We could do that. So creating the idea of if this possibility exists, then you're, then you're conflicted, means that's, we're all conflicted. Like, a conflict only exists when a conflict begins to exist. If that board said, hey, we're gonna give you the contract, board member, then, yeah, there's a conflict there. But like, having the possibility that that board could do that or that our board would do that for them doesn't create a conflict. Like, the possibility isn't a conflict. A conflict is a conflict.
No, the possibility isn't a conflict. But when, when and if it happens, it has already happened, then there's a question about how deeply are you in? And so this is not to stop people from serving. It is just to allow people to serve, but not to also financially benefit from the county while they're influencing decisions that are coming back to us. This is, this is not to keep people from, in the, in the community from serving, but if you are, if, if I have the opportunity, and we would never do this, I would never vote for you to get a contract for anything. That's just, that's just not gonna happen because I, I would be screaming conflict of interest. But we've had a situation where it's, that it's been a question. So that is why this is here. And it's not just for that situation. It's for any situation where we either have to bid or whether we were paying out a lot of money to someone who is sitting on a board that has, that can hire him.
But if that board is not the one hiring him, then there's no conflict. If another board makes a conflict...
That board is, the board that I'm speaking about is, is the board that did the hiring. So they, they, they hired an attorney. They hired a, a computer company. We have the same company here with the county, which, which has been fine, been four or five years. But when you're sitting on a board and that same board hires you to do that, then that's a problem.
I, I don't think that board has made those contracts. I don't think this is ready, and I'd like to motion to table.
Let me, I'm just making a comment here. According to what I understand about the ordinance that you drafted, to me, the way I stand, where I stand here is it avoids all levels of potential conflicts, whether it be here, of course, in the future, or any, any type of area where it could even come into place. And I think on a county level, that's what we need to avoid so that we're not faced with anything that could come after the fact because we've left the wording out. It happens.
And, I mean, the last phrase in that, in that first section is except consistent with the disclosure and abstention provisions set forth herein. And this ordinance does set forth a disclosure of interest. It has a disclosure of interest section, and it has an abstention to avoid conflicts of interest section, as well.
So in our, in our no longer quite as obscure hypothetical, as long as that person recuses himself from that vote, there wouldn't be a conflict? Is that what I'm understanding?
Potentially, yes.
Yeah. It's the word potentially that keeps me with a motion table.
It, it's because the, the language is reasonable opportunity to influence. There's always going to be a potential. And, I, I mean, in any number of hypotheticals, there could be a potential. I don't, I don't know any way to write, to write that potential out.
Because there's not one. Because there's not one. That's why the feds don't define it. That's why the state doesn't define it. Because there's not one. The, when, when I won my first election in 2018, I was serving as the public defender liaison, not, what's the wrong word? I was the, filling the role of the public defender in the Veterans Mental Health Court for no money because I feel strongly about alternative courts. I was just doing it for free. And they brought to my attention, hey, because you're in this position, like, you're supposed to be getting this money that's part of the grant. Like, this is what this is for. And I was like, I'm not really interested, but like, you guys have to follow your rules. But as soon as I won the election here, like, I no longer could serve in that position, even for free. Like, I couldn't do it anymore. So they had to find someone else. Like, I get the idea of, hey, I can't vote myself money. But the idea that if the potential exists, there is a conflict, that's, that's a step too far. Right now, the potential exists for me to go and ask them, hey, put me back on this board. But there's not a conflict because there's not a conflict. But the potential for a conflict to arise is there. And so saying, if the potential to have this happen is, is possible in the world of random possibilities, then there's a conflict this person can't serve. You see what I'm saying? Like, the potentiality of it, there's a potential right now that I could go and be a public defender. You know, like, I could. I, I don't. I used to be a public defender. I'm not anymore. But the potential is there. And so the idea that with the existence of potential means a conflict exists, like, that, that, that blows the whole thing up. That means the, the mere idea that it could happen means it already has happened. That's a bridge too far for me. And I, so I, again...
So it doesn't actually...
There's not a conflict until there's a conflict.
To avoid the, to avoid the possibility of it happening? I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. It's not happening, but, but that wording avoids any potential possibility?
By, by making that person unable to sit on that board. So the, following that same logic, to avoid my potential conflict with the Veterans Mental Health Court, I would have to resign. And of course, that's ridiculous, like, because there's not a conflict. Like, I resigned before I took my position, but like, I could go back to that position. You see what I'm saying?
But you're not getting paid. If you were getting paid...
But I, but I had to. Like, now, but to follow their rules, I would have to get paid.
Because that would mean that you're working for the county in two different organizations.
That's right. That's right. But, but the, what I'm saying is the potential for me to do that right now exists. Like, whether they would hire me or not, I don't know. But like, potentially, they could. And what this is saying is because there's a potential, the conflict exists. And so this person can't sit on a board where a potential conflict could arise. It's not a conflict until it's a conflict. You, you follow what I'm saying? Like, if I say, hey, I'm gonna vote for this because that's gonna mean money in my pocket, that's a conflict. The other day, when I, at the zoning meeting, I had to say, hey, this is land I grew up on, and I know the developer, and I'm out. Like, I, you know, like, because there was a conflict there. I wasn't gonna make any money from it, but like, I just knew the guys involved, so I went, I'm out. But like...
That's you, Jane.
But, but what I'm saying is if...
That's not how folks be operating out here.
But what I'm saying is the, what this would say is because potentially I could have voted on that, I couldn't have sat on that board.
No, that's not what this says. You can sit on the board. As long as you don't, you're not in a position to benefit financially. That's just like what we do here. But if your, if your company is contracting with the agency that you're serving with, that is a conflict of interest.
Not if you're not the one making the decision. Not if you're not the one making the decision. It's, I, I, I...
Okay, so we had a motion on the floor that...
But there, there hasn't been a second, so...
There, this is, this ordinance is in two parts. So if, there's an, you have an ethics ordinance, which is Chapter 12. You have a conflict of interest ordinance, which is Chapter 12A. You approved both as they were on, on first reading. If you wanted to approve on second reading, which is what this is, the ethics ordinance and revisit the conflicts of interest ordinance, you could do that.
So we could actually approve this reading with the amended changes to 12 and 12A? Is that what you're saying?
You, you could, yes.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the, on second reading, the ethics ordinance in Chapter 12 and the conflict of interest... Is it conflict of interest in 12A?
Yes.
And the conflict of interest in 12A as presented by staff.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Uh, excuse me. Discussion? I'm sorry. We've been having discussion. All right. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Two. All those opposed? Two. No action? Do we want to approve the, the first part?
No, I, I just made a motion for, for both parts.
Both parts.
So the first part, I'm not understanding what the first part. The first part is what we voted on the last time, but we asked for you to clear up some of the, like, the ambiguity.
You actually approved, you approved both as Chapter 12 and Chapter 12A. And you asked me to, to clear up the ambiguity based on the workshop language, which was in Chapter 12A.
So, so my chair, my question to you, Mr. Chairman, is you haven't said anything. So I want to, I would, could you explain to us where you are and how you got to that spot?
The first part, 12, I have absolutely no problem with. I think we should approve 12 tonight. 12A, obviously, there is some discussion on what contract employees are about. I'm not quite sure where we are with that portion of it. That's not the portion that I was looking at when I read through that. So my recommendation is we do not approve 12A at this time. We approve 12...
Just 12.
Just 12. And we ask the attorney to come back and clarify this contract and all that business so that we, if we can't understand it and we worked a workshop, then the public probably will not be able to understand it.
I think it's a matter, I think we understand it. It's just a matter we disagree.
Now, we, we disagree because we have a, if I might, we have a situation right now in our elections office. We have a situation where the chairperson of the elections office is also contracted with election boards to handle their computer stuff. That person is also contracted to handle millions of dollars' worth of computer stuff for this county. So if you're sitting on a board and you're the chairman of a board, and that board decides to per, to hire you to do work for that board, and I don't know what that's gonna cost, it is clearly that you're, it's clear to me that you're gonna benefit from your relationship with that board. That mean, we, we're saying hypothetical, hypothetical. This is real stuff. Okay? So that's why we're doing this, in case y'all are wondering why we're dancing around this. I'm not, I'm not trying to call people out, but we have a situation where that is a problem. And I have a problem with someone sitting on a board that is making millions of dollars off the county and then making decisions for a county-type board. That, that is my whole, my whole thing. So it's two-two. I'm fine with it. You guys make a motion. But I want you to be clear, this is not something that we have dreamed of. This is a situation that we're trying to get rectified right now.
All right. So my answer is let's, let's approve 12 for the final reading. We're all square with that, I think. And then we'll look at 12A with the attorney to try to figure out if there's any other words we can do.
I said we just go ahead, like, she's already made a motion. I'm filing a second, and I think we should just go ahead and leave it as it is.
We, we voted on that one.
We voted, too.
That was a no action.
That was a no action.
So now she's got another action.
So if somebody wants to make another motion, I think he wants to make another motion and just do the first half.
All right. I'm for trying to move the ethics on to be able to do that without the conflict of interest. So I make a motion that we approve the paragraph 12 or...
Chapter 12.
Chapter 12 on the ordinance. Okay? I have a motion and a second. All right. Discussion? Do we have an issue with the chapter 12?
I don't have an issue with chapter 12.
Was one thing that was brought up right before the meeting was the, the...
Cost.
Cost, like, the potential cost, like, that gets refunded if...
The filing fee.
The filing fee, that's... Can we, can we get that set to, like, a number that's related to the actual cost of the filing fee as opposed to sort of pegging it at a number? Does that make sense?
The administrative cost associated with... I, I think the reason we paid, that you paid it at a number is because the administrative cost associated with filing an ethics complaint is well above what you would want to charge your citizens to, to file a complaint. So...
That's listed in Section 2-12004, contents of complaint.
12.
Item seven.
Oh, and it has all, does it have all the costs?
It says the complaint shall include filing the...
We don't have any way of really knowing what all the costs would be, but it would involve...
But it would certainly be more than, because I mean...
It would involve reviewing...
It's more than an hour of your time, so...
Yes, yes.
And that's more than $100 on the same.
And also reviewing, convening the, the board, the ethics review panel.
So, so the $100 is certainly lower than even the cost of a frivolous...
Yes.
So if, if, if the attorney reviews the complaint and it says on the face this could actually be a violation, then it will go to the board, right? But if the attorney looks at it on the face and says it doesn't hit the marks for what is a complaint, then that is the end of the complaint. So what is the price from that point back to the beginning? Not, not having to convene the board because if, if the attorney says there's nothing to go forward with, then that's all the cost. That is, that's the included cost for a suit that's quote-unquote frivolous. If someone goes to the process, then we call the board, and the board investigates blah, 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 and they don't win, then why are we gonna make them pay some money? Because they, obviously, at some point, it was determined that there could be an ethics violation. So I, I think we can't go by what it costs from point A to Z because when you get from point A to G, it may stop dead there. So, so if we can, you know, if we know that that's $3,000, then maybe we need, need to say, okay, your, your fee is only 10% or it's only 1%. But I think we have to have a real number to justify what we're saying is a filing fee. I know when Commissioner Hallbaker was here, you know, he wanted to be a couple, a couple hundred dollars, and I think we, you know, squeezed it back down to 100. But I don't want it to be a detriment to people to think that we are trying through this course of action to keep them from filing because it's gonna be a cost.
All of us feel that same way. We just don't...
And, and I, I thought about that as well. The court provides an, an opportunity for folks to file things and submit an affidavit, like a pauper's affidavit kind of thing, so that they're, they're excused from, from paying that filing fee. But Commissioner Hallbaker's number was, was pretty accurate as to the time that it would take.
Right. I mean...
And the cost that it would take for review because we're talking about input, submitting it to me or somebody in my office or whoever, the attorney reviewing it, and getting back with the, the filer[1786.74] as far as if there are techni, if there are technical deficiencies, and then potentially reviewing it again after they resubmit it to fix whatever technical issues might have been with the initial filing.
So, maybe we're not ready to, for this one to be voted on either. I mean, I'm just saying, if we got to still figure out how, how much money it's going to be and if it's going to be any money, if it's going, I mean, you know, if you're going to charge somebody ten dollars for this, that's just, it just costs ten dollars to get the ten dollars. So, yeah.
So, and also, and we can go ahead and just kind of take with this if we want to put a little action, help me even want to do this. But, um, Stephanie, and I want to thank you for talking to me earlier about clarifying the ordinance as if we were talking about the workshop. What happens if, if, if the commissioner has to leave the seat, what that procedure is? Um, which, could you put the.
So, that's, that, that's a different ordinance.
That's the next ordinance.
Yeah, that's the next one.
So, you had a motion and a second.
I have a motion and a second for just, just twelve.
Again, my, my concern with the hundred dollar figure was, I, I don't want it to cost thirty dollars and that we're charging them a hundred dollar filing fee. But knowing now that it's a lot more than that, even just to file, like, I'm good capping that at a hundred dollars, so that it's not a cost, but it's.
It's what?
I, I don't know any other way to do this, you know? We can't, we can't put a figure in there like, and say, it's going to be three thousand dollars. We don't want to do that. So, we want to back it back down to something that is reasonable to be able to do it. Hundred dollars is, is acceptable to me at this point. We could look at it and then say, at the end of a year, let's look, relook at the hundred dollars and say, all right, we haven't had any in a year, or, hey, we've got a whole bunch and a, a hundred dollars is not the right number for us.
Uh, the, the magistrate court has a procedure where you can go in and say, this person should, a warrant should be taken out against this person for X reason. And like, there's a fee associated with that. And if the warrant is taken out, like, you get your money back, like.
Well, in this situation, if, if the compl, if, if there, if a violation is found, then they get their money back.
Right.
In the ordinance.
It says that, um, which shall be refunded to the complainant if the covered official is found to have violated the ethics ordinance.
Well, but my, my thought is, instead of us picking the number, have that, instead of a number figure, set it as whatever the filing fee of the magistrate court would be, whatever that equivalent is, because they're the ones crunching that number and figuring out what the filing fee should be. And it wouldn't be us figuring out, it'd be.
But the lawyers for Stephanie, I mean, their, their time is, you know, a couple hundred dollars in an hour. And if you've got to get the complaint, read the complaint, look up your whatever is lawyer stuff, and then decide something. We're already talking about thousands of dollars.
It's the same thing with the magistrate court. I mean, there's a judge involved, they have a hearing, they got to subpoena people, like, it's more than their filing fee. You know what I'm saying? But they're the ones that, like, set that according to, like, a state kind of guideline and whatever.
I, I think we start with a hundred dollars. We look at it as we go along. We haven't had one in a year, I think, hardly. Uh, it's been just a little.
We might be working on one.
All right. Any more discussion on just the twelve? All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand? Three. All those opposed? One. Motion carries to, on the ethics side. Thank you. That consent agenda was not exactly what we want to do. Okay. Item number nine, old business. Consider acceptance of a resolution recognizing Juneteenth as a holiday for Spalding County employees and providing an additional day of discretionary pay for those employees for the twenty twenty-two Juneteenth holiday.
Now, it says resolution. Is there something to read? Or is this?
There is a resolution.
Okay.
Uh, so, the resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Spalding County authorizing that Juneteenth be recognized as an official holiday for Spalding County employees to provide employees an additional day off with pay for Juneteenth to be taken at the discretion of the employee on or before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and for other purposes. Um, continuing whereas in June of twenty-one, uh, President Joe Biden signed legislation taking Juneteenth a federal holiday, and the Board of Commissioners of Spalding County would like to recognize Juneteenth on the official holiday schedule for Spalding County and, Spalding County employees. And the Board of Commissioners of Spalding County voted to recognize Juneteenth as a holiday for Spalding County employees at its meeting on June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. And the Board of Commissioners of Spalding County would like to authorize an additional day off with pay for all Spalding County employees to be taken at the discretion of the employee on or before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, now therefore, be it resolved by the board, and it is hereby resolved by authority of the same, that Juneteenth shall be recognized as an official holiday for Spalding County employees and shall be added to the official holiday schedule to be adopted by the Board of Commissioners in December of each year. And Spalding County employees shall be given an additional paid day off for the calendar year twenty twenty-two in recognition of the Juneteenth holiday, which shall be taken at the discretion of each employee on or before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The resolution shall be effective as of June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, being the date approved by the Board of Commissioners at its extraordinary session. So, this would add an additional holiday for our employees.
And a back floating date for this year.
For this year, that's correct.
Second. All right, have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand? Four, zero. Thank you. Item number ten, new business. Consider request for amplification, amplification for Iris Hernandez to host a birthday party at twenty-one sixty Rock Creek Road, Hampton, Georgia, on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, from five P M. to ten thirty P M. Dr. Ledbetter.
Uh, this is a request that has gone through our departments for review, and all of them are in favor of recommending approval for this amplification, application.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand? Four, zero. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number two, consider request for amplification from Jeanette Steen for a wedding to be held at Meadowlark Nineteen Thirty-nine Event Center, located at twenty-six thirteen Noonan Road, Griffin, Georgia, on July thirty, twenty twenty-two, from five to ten thirty P M. Dr. Ledbetter.
Again, uh, this application was distributed through our departments, and all of them are in agreement that, uh, we approve this amplification application.
Motion to approve.
I have a mo, I have a motion and a second. Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand? Four, zero. Thank you. Item number three, consider request from Spalding County Parks and Leisure Services Advisory Commission to allow the Spalding County Pickleball Association to file for and obtain a permit to serve alcohol during the APP Pickleball Tour scheduled for September seventh through eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Dr. Ledbetter?
This is the second year that, uh, that we have afforded the alcohol permit to be, um, provided for the APP, uh, tournament. So, we've gone through staff and they have agreed to ask for your consideration and approval for this application.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand? Four, zero. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Mr. Sean Fleet from Heath and Lineback would like to update the Board of Commissioners on the State Highway One Fifty-five redirecting project from downtown Griffin. Dr. Ledbetter and Mr. Fleet.
Recognize Mr. Fleet.
All right. Good evening. I'm Sean Fleet. I'm with Heath and Lineback Engineers. Dr. Ledbetter asked me to come and give the Board an update on the project progress on the SR One Fifty-five redesignation project, which is G dot P I zero zero one six seven nine two. Uh, we were selected by the county to complete a draft concept report for the project. Slide, please. Um, what I'm going to talk to you about briefly is the project location and description, the project justification, um, the planned G dot Griffin bypass, um, some alternates that we're studying for the project, and then our project status, what we've done, what remains, the future project phases, and, uh, schedule and funding. So, next slide, please. Okay, that's good. Okay, so this is, this, this is a Spalding County project consisting of a scoping phase or concept development for SR fifty, One Fifty-five redesignation between SR One Fifty-five and SR sixteen along North McDonough Road. The purpose of the project is to reroute SR One Fifty-five truck traffic away from downtown Griffin and direct it directly to SR sixteen. SR sixteen is an existing four-lane divided arterial. And a little bit more about the project location, this is, um, you guys are probably very familiar with this. Uh, SR One Fifty-five comes, uh, what is that, uh, south-northeast, um, or s, south, southwest-northeast, and then, uh, runs directly through downtown Griffin. Um, so, the proposed project routes that truck traffic south on, not, North McDonough Road, and then you turn right on, or I'm sorry, yeah, right on SR One Fifty, or SR sixteen, and continue south, or continue along here east to, uh, the intersection of One Fifty-five, and then you're able to continue, uh, south on One Fifty-five. Um, as I said, the main goal is to reroute truck, truck traffic out of downtown area. Um, North McDonough Road travels north and south, as I showed. And, um, a couple of other items to note is the Spalding, uh, the future or, or planned Spalding-Griffin Airport here, and then some development that's potentially happening. Next slide, please. Um, another, other things to note, um, this is the G dot Griffin Plan Bypass. Uh, our project is phase one of that bypass of the, of the city, and it's on North McDonough Road, which I showed before. And then phase one of the bypass goes from, is on the southwest side of town. It goes from six, SR sixteen, and then runs, it's the blue option here, or the blue, uh, route shown. And it goes to SR three, ties in there, and then the orange route is phase three. It starts at SR three, crosses SR One Fifty-five, and then ties back in up at SR sixteen.
Would, is there any plan for One Fifty-five, when it comes north, to then take that orange route as well around?
Say that again?
So, One Fifty-five, when it comes from the south towards north, is there, is there any? So, right now, One Fifty-five would come, after this, would come up into downtown and go out sixteen, and then go up North McDonough. After the phase three, would that change again and go on that orange path?
Um, I'm not exactly sure what the One Fifty-five designation will be. It, it, for, for this project, it'll, it'll, for our project, it'll, it will, um, you know, run.
It's this, yeah.
And, and then, and then it'll direct traffic onto sixteen and then in south of town. And then, once they build the bypasses, I don't know what G dot will decide to do, whether they'll route, they'll assign that as, you know, the orange route being One Fifty-five or, or not, if that's what your question was.
These, these bypasses are the actual, like, construction or just sign as changes, like?
The blue route, the blue route and the orange route are planned projects out in the future. They're, uh, the few, the dates for those are, are, I think, phase three is like in twenty fifty, twenty fifty-one.
Yeah.
And then, uh, I was going to talk about that in a sec, but hang on. The other one is.
Even as young as you are.
Twenty, twenty fifty's.
The phase two is, phase two is twenty thirty-six for construction. And, you know, things can advance. Those aren't, those are just dates where G dot has allocated funding. So, um, and our project here has a, has a, a date of, uh, I think it's twenty thirty-two, but with, I'm going to, I was going to talk about this momentarily, but if you have an approved concept report and, and the, and those nu, numbers can shift forward.
Yes, yes.
So. But our project just consists of, of, you know, this section right here.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, moving along. So, our, uh, we've drafted a project justification statement. All concept reports have a justification statement, and, and this is based on our stakeholder meetings and based on the needs and desires of the project. And, um, and these were, these needs and desires were developed by the stakeholders. And the, the main needs are rerouting truck traffic out of downtown Griffin, um, and then, of course, tying to the, uh, G dot bypass, and then improving roadway geometry. North McDonough Road is fairly straight, but there's several vertical curves that would need to be improved um, with that. And then, improving intersection safety, there's several, or there's two, uh, four-way stop intersections that were, uh, identified to be improved. And then designing to state route standards was identified since it will be a state route facility. And then, um, the project's going to consider pedestrians and bicycles since it's on G dot state route, or it's G dot state bike route fifteen. Next slide, please. So, we've, we're studying four alternates that were identified by the stakeholders, and we're evaluating those, uh, as, as the project progresses. And the first one is the, uh, you know, the North McDonough Road corridor in the center. And then we, the next one's what we call the airport route. It utilizes, uh, existing SR One Fifty-five. And then hangs a left on, uh, into new location just south of the airport property, and would go on new location, and then it would tie back into SR sixteen at Wild Plum Road. And then, we also are studying a west alternate, which uses some of S, existing SR One Fifty-five, and then is on new location, ties back into North McDonough Road. And then, uh, an east option that uses Jackson Road for a little bit, and then goes south on new location, and then ties back into, uh, to North McDonough Road. And then, per the evaluation we're doing and the stakeholder involvement, it's, it's looking like the preferred alternative will be North McDonough Road. So, next slide. So, the scope of work that's completed to date is, we've done an environmental screening and ecology resource identification for the North McDonough Road corridor. We've done a traffic engineering study. Uh, and we, that was submitted to G dot for review, and we just got review comments, so we'll be making those corrections. We have an existing pavement evaluation, uh, that tests the, the existing pavement on North McDonough Road. Um, and then we've held two stakeholder meetings and had an initial team concept meeting. Um, and then currently, we're just developing and evaluating those project alternatives. Um, and then the scope of work that remains, uh, we need to complete the draft concept report and then request a concept team meeting, submit the concept report for review. And then this is currently tracking to be done by the fall, by fall of this year. And then futures, future, uh, scope of work will be to hold a public information open house. And this is work that is not under our contract, but will be required for the approval of the concept report. So, we'll hold, we'll need to hold a public information open house, and then possibly revise the concept report per that public, uh, information open house, and then submit it for G dot approval. And then, once approved, uh, you move into preliminary design, right-of-way acquisition, environmental documentation, and then final design will need to be completed before construction would begin. And then, um, so additional funding and schedule, so short-term funding is needed, um, for the remaining concept scope, and that includes the P I O H and concept report approval. And these were not included originally because of funding shortfalls. And so, uh, longer term, uh, preliminary engineering, right-of-way, and construction funding is under G dot P I zero zero eight six eight two. And then, preliminary engineering is currently, as we spoke to before, is programmed for twenty thirty-two at, um, seven hundred sixty thousand dollars. And then right-of-way acquisition is programmed for twenty thirty-four at one point three million dollars. And then construction is programmed for twenty thirty-six at seven point six million dollars. And then, our part of, or, part of our concept work is to provide more detailed cost, um, for the project, and those will be included in the concept report that's submitted. And the good news is that, once those numbers are, are, are done and, and the concept report is approved, th, these funding numbers can move up into the, uh. th- these funding numbers can move up into the, uh, more current years on the step. That's all I got, any questions?
Sean, that's great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We've gotta do the, thank you, Sean. For everybody's knowledge, we've gotta do the work now. It's gonna be a long time from now. And I know some of you look out there and say, twenty thirty-two, twenty sw- We've gotta do that work right now so that we get ready, so that the people who sit in these seats in those timeframe are getting what we need for the citizens, all right? Item number five. The Blue Cypress team will update the board on the comprehensive plan. Request permission to move the plan forward to, with a transmittal letter to Three Rivers Regional Commission.
Ms. Hatley?
Hello, Ms. Hatley, welcome back. Hello, thank you, Chairman and Board. Um, my name is Paige Hatley with Hatley Plans. I'm part of the Blue Cypress team that's been working with the county to update the comprehensive plan as well as the capital improvements element, or CIE as we call it. Ansley Jones with Blue Cypress is also here tonight. Um, you may recognize Ansley from some of our previous planning workshops, um, relative to the planning process for the comp plan. Um, as indicated, um, public hearings is what's on the cover slide here, the introductory slide. Um, I have a brief, uh, summary presentation where I'm gonna combine, um, an overview of the status of where we are with the comp plan and the CIE before having the required public hearings, um, to meet the requirements of state law, or the guidelines of Georgia Department of Community Affairs to be specific regarding planning for the comp plan and the CIE. And I'll explain a little bit about why that requirement's there in just a minute. Okay, is this me or you, am I doing it?
I, I just went to the slide.
Okay, next.
She was trying to help.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, as mentioned, comprehensive plan and the CIE, these are concurrent planning processes that have been tracking together for the past several months. Comprehensive plan is much broader in scope. This is your policy document regarding future growth and development. And, um, all of the eye candy that you see on the slide delineates the requirements that DCA says has to go into a comprehensive plan. And then we've added the capital improvements element, um, which is also mandated. The comp plan is required by the state to be updated every five years. So that's why we're here, subsequent to twenty seventeen again. Uh, the CIE is a state requirement for communities that collect impact fees. There's no, um, deadline to update as there is with the comprehensive plan. Uh, but the state says if you're gonna collect impact fees, you have to have an adopted capital improvements element that presents those projects that are eligible for impact fees. Specifically regarding library, uh, parks and public safety, those community facilities that are needed to serve growth, looking ahead twenty years, which is, um, consistent with the planning horizon for the comprehensive plan. Um, so getting to the point of developing the comp plan over the past several months, um, there has been a community engagement program, um, that has fed into and helped inform much of the content of what's in the comp plan update. Uh, this is a representative of the activities. There, um, is greater detail provided in the comprehensive plan, um, including some additional activities that county staff has undertaken to support these efforts on their own, which has been very helpful. Uh, the, the community engagement process has been bookended, um, by public hearings. So kinda getting back to where we're going this evening. Everything that you see under the community engagement, um, those are wonderful suggestions that DCA would love a community to do, but they only mandate that you have two public hearings. That's the only public involvement they technically require. One, a kickoff hearing that we had to introduce both the CIE and the comp plan at the outset of the project. And then what we call a transmittal hearing, uh, to afford the public, uh, another opportunity uh, to speak on the draft documents, these are still drafts for the comp plan and CIE. The full draft comp plan was presented at an open house in June. Um, but again, we do have to check the box by having a formal, uh, hearing before the board can consider transmitting both documents, uh, for review by DCA. So where that puts us then, big picture, um, we are on the other side of July. Actually, between July and August is where we are now, in the dark blue band at the bottom, uh, documentation and finalization. Uh, as mentioned, we, these documents, um, are in draft form. Um, we can undertake some, uh, refinement if needed. Um, but we also don't know what the state will come back with in terms of comments. So, um, ultimately, I just wanna underscore the point that these are still technically drafts and we're looking for finalization and adoption of both the comp plan and CIE, uh, later in September uh, to be, uh, well in advance of the October thirty-first deadline that the state says you must have the comp plan adopted by. And so when DCA, um, when they, uh, opened the plan, if I have this right, thank you. Just keep doing it, okay, next one. What they're gonna see is a document that is, in essence, framed around six key goals. Um, these are the goals that, uh, were presented throughout the, um, they were, they were formulated with input and guidance by the steering committee and by the public. And at every turn during the public engagement process, there was support, um, for these overarching goals to help drive where the plan would be going, to help meet these goals, um, through a series of recommendations. And the first is, uh, through the future development map. Uh, an example here being, um, one of the goals relates to having a balance, balanced growth. And so the future development map, very broadly speaking, is giving a picture of what is appropriate in terms of future land uses and the extent and location of types of development. And beyond the future development map, then we get into greater details with the five-year community work program. Again, this is still speaking to the comprehensive plan. Um, the, the CWP, as we call it, uh, looks out and pulls the near-term projects, has marching orders for the next five years related to housing, economic development, land use, all the topics that the comp plan looked at. In addition to twenty-six projects that we've pulled out from the CIE, the capital improvements element, specific, this is your impact fee program, it has its own five-year work program, that's intact. But in order to present a comprehensive picture of exactly what the CWP looks like for, uh, the county to use as a guide, we've excerpted, um, and copied and pasted, uh, the projects from the impact fee side into the comp plan work program, so we can see everything in its totality. And the next slide, um, I do need to point out, um, the, next one, thank you. Um, subsequent to the posting of the comp plan and CIE, which I believe both were made available for public viewing, um, July first. So this is after we had the, the June public hearing, um, we posted the draft that was presented at that time. But there were, have been a few recommended tweaks to the map, uh, since the plan was made available to the public on July one. And we're recommending that these, uh, map changes be incorporated into the draft that will move forward to DCA for review. Specifically, the one at the top relates to a section south of, uh, the city limits of Griffin, uh, just to the east of Tri-County Crossing, in essence, just reverting back to what's on the com- comprehensive plan or in the comp plan now, the adopted twenty seventeen plan. Reverting from a, um, slightly more rural classification to what it has been, which is the yellow or suburban transition, uh, which is consistent with zoning that's already in place. It's all, uh, the areas zoned for, uh, residential, detached residential uses. And that's also, um, in keeping with the development patterns of residential there. Um, the second one relates to Sun City. Uh, you can see just sketched in on the right with, with blue, uh, and we'll capture it, um, it, it technically in the correct way with GIS, but just showing here that we need to make sure that we're getting the entire accurate footprint of what Sun City will be at its ultimate build-out. And so we just need to, uh, massage the lines correctly to capture that character area. Um, and then the last one is, um, adding, again, a little band of yellow on the lower right. Um, that represents the western limits of, uh, the city. Uh, is currently not showing suburban transition or yellow. And we're adding that sliver in to be consistent with the idea that their suburban transition ringing the entire city of Griffin. Um, sort of a, a, a step down approach from, you know, greatest density within the city around that, um, suburban residential development and then moving beyond out into the county into more rural areas. So that was just another, um, housekeeping tweak, uh, to shore up the boundaries that we were wanting to propose. And then, um, finally, uh, next steps. What's missing here is what's on the cover slide, which is the actual public hearings. So the typical process is, um, that there is a, again, both have been advertised that there's a public hearing for the comp plan. Um, and then either the board can consider whether to move the draft forward via a transmittal letter or you can wait and have, um, open and close the comp plan hearing and then open and close the CIE hearing to, if there's any comment from the public on the draft CIE document. And then, again, um, uh, vote to consider transmitting the CIE for review. That's accomplished by transmittal resolution per state requirements, whereas the comp plan is achieved through a transmittal letter, which hopefully are still, are, are part of your packet. And then, once that's done, we would be packaging, um, all of the materials. And so, in the next week or so, getting everything into the pipeline to your regional commission, who acts as the clearinghouse, and from that point forward, they then jettison the products to DCA and then we wait, um, for a little bit. And then come back, as noted, uh, to finalize and wrap everything up. Have, um, updated comp plan in place and have your updated list of impact fee eligible projects via, via your CIE also in place at that time. So that's, that's the status. And so we need to, need to get the hearings in here, even though they're not indicated in those next steps. I apologize for that.
Okay, comments or questions, yes? Commissioner Johnson?
I'm looking at the, um, slide, we were talking about the Tri-County back on July first. Were you, we were reverting back to suburban transition? Can you explain that, how was that done?
Uh, part of it relates to what's on the ground now as being more appropriate and more consistent with what's on the map now, which is suburban transition. Um, infrastructure availability in that area as well as the prospect for connecting to sewer. Um, and everything there is currently zoned R1. And so it's already setting the stage for being compatible with what is on the map, suburban transition, um, versus going to something that stepped into a, a, a slightly less dense character area of rural. It's still, I, this is not tiny lots. Um, and, and some of the zoning districts that would be recommended in the, um, light green that was proposed are also found in the yellow, uh, suburban transition. Um, but it's just in better keeping with what's there, both in terms of zoning, potential and land use.
So like water, so we were to expand in that area, would this, this map have changed or no?
No, this is that, this is better positioned, that ties into that for that, that, that sets it up by having it just maintained as it is with the suburban transition versus going to a more rural character area. Sorry, I know, there's just all these different character areas, exactly.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Paige before we do go any further on the presentation?
Let, let's look at this, this last one, add suburban transition here. So, the county just did a big overhaul, we had a moratorium for a while, to, to ring Griffin, uh, with non-transition zoning on purpose. Now, we're not doing it to the land just north of that. We're only doing it to this little spot of land there on the, on the third slide. Is that one property owner's land or there are multiple property owners that own that little sliver of land?
I do not know. It looks like it's captured as one, but I, I do not know.
Why, why, why did we move that one? Why did we change that and not say the land just to the north of it or the land just to the south of it?
I'm sorry, are you speaking to the, uh, suburban, this, the one below suburb, the last suburban transition? Right. Um, because it is the only area that is adjacent to the city limits that isn't showing suburban transition. It's, it's inconsistent as far as ringing the entire city. I believe it's the only area.
So, irregardless of the fact that that's currently woods, irregardless of the fact that the county specifically changed the zoning so that it wouldn't be transitioned, so that it would continue to move that direction, your idea is to change the draft and, on your own, to change it into, into transition area, right?
So, let me answer that one for you, okay, 'cause you're gonna be struggling. No, she did not decide to change that on her own. There are several other areas that are adjacent to the city of Griffin, that whole dense population that is equal to the city of Griffin. And if you go in a circle all the way around in the big map, you will see that there are these transitional areas, which are areas that go from huge density to almost no density. So that's a transition area. That movement on the south side, this is not the only place, was done because that is the only place on the map where we do not have a suburban transition area adjacent to the city of Griffin. So it allows us the opportunity so that the people who are living on, um, right off of Meriwether Street where they're trying to build the houses, it will keep us from having that density right on top of single acre lots. It will offer an area of transition where it can be less density.
Until the city decides to annex it, I mean-
But that's, that's part of the plan. If we don't have it as a plan to say, this is what we want in this area, then they don't have anything to go by if we say we don't like it.
Which is why specifically, we, we put it there so that it's not a transition area, so that they wouldn't annex it and allow someone to build four hundred units of low-cost apartments like they're doing on Williams Road, which we went and fought and fought. Two hundred, some people voted, uh, came and spoke against it, forty-five minutes just reading the emails. And yet, they voted for it anyway. And so we took action in these areas to say, we don't want this sprawl to continue. We don't want you to keep taking nice woodland areas next to people who decided to live in the country for a reason and build John and Palmer complexes without even asking us. So we specifically did a whole list of actions to try to prevent that from happening and I've seen-
I'm not familiar with that, that action that we took.
You guys weren't here for that year?
No, I, I understand that, but we didn't take any specific actions as a county to counteract that because whenever the, sorry about getting into business.
Yeah, we, we absolutely didn't.
The city has a right to annex. And they ask us if we want to allow the annexation. But if we don't have a plan that says, you can't put this much density this close to one acre lots, that is why we have the transition area. So you don't go from white to black. I may, I could've came up with some other colors, but it was the quickest one I could come up with. So it's not just in that area. There is a ring around the city of Griffin and I'm, you know, unfortunately, it's not developed on that side. But we can address it on the north side, we can address it on the Sun City side and on the west side. But we don't know what the growth is gonna look like in thirty years. And, and if we don't protect that area, clearly, it's not gonna match what else we have, we have in the county. So that's not just to allow somebody to come in and do that. It gives us a leverage, and Stephanie, you can tell me if I'm wrong. It gives us a leverage to go back to the city of Griffin and say, that totally goes against what we have planned for that area.
Yeah, I think it strengthens-
Because I think before we didn't have anything.
I think it strengthens your argument against annexation.
So, so making this, making the future land use map show a more dense area strengthens our argument to go and argue against them increasing the density.
No, it, it gives us the opportunity to make an argument against the annexation.
Uh, help me, help me understand why, why that would be better than saying, please unannex this woods in terms of apartment?
Same level of density without the increased tax burden.
So since we're already doing it-
Correct.
Okay.
This is the update anyway, why can't we actually conduct any action?
So Paige, sorry.
The, the action, the action this evening is to make a-
Okay, I don't mean to sound like I'm crossing the table. I, I'd go into that habit a lot, I apologize.
No, not at all.
And I have to apologize pretty often, I-
Well, I mean, the, the point is, I, I mean, obviously, we, we've got the hearings and there may be additional comments to be received in just a minute. But y'all need to be comfortable with the draft as it, because it does need to get in the pipeline soon in order to keep our schedule. schedule. There are, you know, some modifications that can be made as long as it doesn't constitute a major amendment. So if we're getting into making, once it's in for DCA review, going back to the map and really tinkering, then there's an issue with that. But if there's any other kind of modification to better explain some text or, or shore up and wordsmithing or anything to otherwise address some concerns, we still have some wiggle room. But anyway, we do need to be in a position of making, hopefully, a, a motion to move the plan forward.
I, I don't know if this is actually a comprehensive plan issue, and Stephanie, maybe you can help me with it. But in our plan, do we say that our goal is to, to start with density close to, to the city and then follow our map out into, I mean, do we physically say that in our, like, a goal of what we have?
Well, it's, it's described through a, an illustrative depiction of that goal, is the future development map that clearly delineates the urban proximity boundaries that has been mapped. And so we have that overlaid, so we have a ring of suburban and then we have a partial ring as this previous map for urban proximity. And we do explain that there are opportunities for the highest density adjacent to consideration of a rezoning, let's say, that would accommodate that if it's adjacent to the city and if it's adjacent to in-kind use, dwelling type or density. So that is expressed in the body of how it's explained, specific to some of our character areas.
I think it's important for us to have that in the plan because that just stands us up even more when we say, this is not what we have planned for this. We clearly have a different plan for that.
I don't think the words are exactly, I think the map really does it well. I don't think the words are as strong as you're talking about.
Well, I mean, but we had nothing before to stand up on.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Yeah, I think the request this evening is for us to consider a transmittal letter to move this forward, move the plan forward for Three Rivers Regional Commission and regional consideration. Is that correct?
Will we still have a public hearing?
Yes.
We have to do that first before you can consider moving it forward. So we-
We gotta do public hearings before the transmittal.
Public hearing tonight and then you would move it forward or, or discuss, choose to or not. And then we have to do the same thing for the CIE tonight, have a public hearing on that document and then you would vote to authorize it, move forward for review.
So you're suggesting we have a public hearing tonight?
We, that's how they have been advertised. This is the normal, this is what we typically do.
And it was properly advertised?
Yes, sir. It was, we, we got everything out to staff, they worked with us in June to make sure that everything was posted. And so again, this is common. We, we have what's called the transmittal hearing the same night and then the board moves to act on transmitting the draft.
So I'm just like totally not knowing that this was a public hearing. I mean, that this was what it was supposed to be. I'm not comfortable with us transmitting it without having citizens to rip, no, us having said, okay, guys, this is the chance for you to come in and say, so how can we fix it and still expedite what we need to do?
If, if public hearing was advertised for tonight, can we do public hearing Thursday night?
Uh, um. I, I don't know how, I mean, if, if something were to be moved.
You would need to re-advertise it for a new date.
Re-advertise, and that's another fifteen days.
Yeah.
Oh, y'all making my blood pressure go up. I mean, I, I don't know, you know?
If it was appropriately advertised, um-
It was written in the paper.
Then you could amend the agenda to add a public hearing and you could just open it up to the floor for comment because you didn't have a separate signing sheet for public hearing.
We can re-advertise.
Yeah, so, so let's just say that somebody did want to come. Is this, you know, did we, did we run it in the newspaper or put it on the Facebook and say, here is a copy of the thing, you can look at it and then you can come and discuss? I, I want people to have the opportunity to have, to look at it, to get their questions together and then come up and, and hear. And if they don't show up, then fine. But I feel like we need to make an all-out effort that people know this is the hearing for what we're gonna be like the next twenty years. So, yeah.
Well, and totally duly noted, that also was the push for the open house, that, that idea that, that it was the plan presented. And so here, we're just coming back around to say, well, here's the actual document, these three proposed changes, and then moving it forward. So I don't wanna discount that June meeting because that was the point, to try to also make available. And I don't know if, also, it's been available, if there are public comments received, two is something that we would've been made aware of prior to the, as far as the three to four weeks that it's been available for review. And I don't know that we've received anything to that end.
So question, I asked the county attorney, will this have actually been on the agenda, listed as, as a public hearing?
It should, it was properly advertised, but it should've been on the agenda.
It should've been on the agenda, yes.
As soon as we could do it would be, looks like Thursday, the fourth of August.
What's that gonna do to your dates?
Well, so, part of the reason of really trying to beat the drum of September, September, September is to give a little bit of breathing room at the end because it's technically not due until October thirty-first for adoption. And so, you know, that, that's something that we would just have to be in a position to be nimble and have the hearing respond to or be able to react to and you all decide how you wanna react to comments if received and if it's worth modifying the plan before it goes forward. But to act quickly and just get it in the pipeline, in essence, the next day, you know, get it out in the, in the email chain and move it forward. And so you're, you know, you would be looking at probably about the time that we would hope to adopt September nineteenth is probably when we'd be receiving comments back from the state, if any, if any. And then if there are comments, then that typically is another one to two weeks turnaround, making the changes, shoot it back out, and they're pretty quick about getting back.
So the draft is going to, to Three Rivers as a draft, and if they put their stamp on it, it's still gonna be a draft until we vote on it, right?
Three Rivers merely gets it out the door to DCA. They do a preliminary check, they have a week to make sure it, it's, it looks okay, but it's DCA, that's one that does the deep dive. And so, yes, it, it's still, until it comes back with an adoption resolution, it's still a draft.
So I totally understand your statement about, we don't want to make these huge changes because obviously people have been working on this the last four or five months. But, and many people may or may not have any changes that they wanted to have. I just think we just still need to, even if we do the transmittal, we still need to have a hearing. So we may be able to do that simultaneously from our end while you've submitted, since it's still in draft form. And if there's anything that's weird or needs to be different, then it'll only be that thing.
And I do wanna make sure that everything is vetted to the extent that it can be before the fourth, if there are any additional comments.
Right.
And then at that meeting, so that when it is in the pipeline, if there are refinements, we're no longer toying with the map, if you will.
Right, yeah.
We're maybe changing a picture, we're maybe wordsmithing something if there be.
Right.
But that ship has sailed as far as substantive changes, once it's out the door.
You don't wanna send it until after the, something like that.
No, you don't.
No, we're not sending it until after that, until after we have the public hearing.
Oh, you can't, correct, you can't, so.
All right. Now, we've got a couple of things that we've gotta figure out. One, we said certain people, is there anybody in the audience that wanted to make a statement on tonight about the comprehensive plan?
Well, if it was advertised as a public meeting, then theoretically, I mean, that's, all right, let's, I think we've-
So let me just ask you to ask a different question. Does anybody in here, show of hands, know what the comprehensive plan is? Okay, so yeah, they didn't, they didn't, wouldn't know what that, you don't count. I mean, you do count, but you know what I'm saying? That's your job to know about it. So I'm just saying, people came here to the meeting tonight to hear our normal stuff. So if they knew that it was an opportunity for them to come in and look at the plan three hours or four hours or all day before we, I'm just saying, we just need to do the right thing.
And what do you think the right thing is?
Is we need to schedule a meeting and we need to make sure that everybody who can possibly be concerned about it.
Fifteen days, all right, for August?
Do you have availability on August the fourth at six P M?
Yes.
Is that like a meeting day?
It is not.
It is not.
Okay.
This is fifteen-
It's a Thursday evening at six P M. If you will, just let us know and we will move that forward.
You say all of us before?
That's the revolting meeting, but if I'm working-
Oh, yeah, that's a good day, that's a good day.
Oh.
That's a good day. What'd you say kinda meeting you gotta go to?
That's the, that's the monthly revolting meetings, first thing.
Okay.
They, they'll get it if I'm here working.
Okay. So, Reid, can you come on the floor?
Should be.
All right, that sounds good. Sorry about that, Paige.
No, we, we need to have this discussion and I appreciate that. I just do wanna clarify that that is a public hearing, it's not another open house.
Right.
Okay.
Correct, it will only be presented as a public hearing.
Yes.
Question, could it be helpful for me if we had actual pictures that were bigger so I could see what was really going on?
Yeah, is all this-
I know that sounds crazy, but I, these pictures just, I can't understand some of the suburbanism, all the, I just don't see it.
Thank you, thank you.
So the ma-
This is all online, right?
It is.
Yes, now, I, we, we need to make sure that it's updated. Yes, exactly, thank you for pointing that out. And so if, we'll make sure it's the latest draft, it should be, and so anyone can zoom in. I, I do have a final question. Do you want to, for the CIE, also hold that or have the public hearing and move forward?
Can we do it all together?
Yes.
Let's just, you know, make it available to the public to come in and look at it if we got a copy of it and then do the meeting all together.
Okay. Six o'clock, normal, that's a normal time?
All right, so, just, just so we can make this very good, can we get a motion to do the public hearing on August the fourth at six P M?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will, don't we need to add this to the agenda? Stephanie, Stephanie, Stephanie?
No, cause it's-
It's part of the plan.
It's part of this, okay, I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, for us to do a public, a combined public hearing of the future comprehensive plan and the CIE work program on August the fourth at a public hearing at six, eighteen hundred hours.
But, but does that need to be two public hearings at the same time or one after, I suppose it'll combine them?
I think you do it one after the other.
Yes.
One after, so that'd be two on the same day?
So hold two public hearings consecutive?
One for the CIE, one for the comprehensive.
One for the work plan, the comprehensive plan.
I knew what you meant, which, okay.
Clarify that.
All right, I have a motion, and I, you second it, all right? Any more discussion on that? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Four zero.
All right, thank you. I'll see you again.
See us again. All right, excuse me, let me get my calendar so I've done that. Okay. Item number six.
Yeah, Ms. Hadley, did we take care of number six for you as well on the CIE?
Yes, thank you, I did the combo, yes, thank you very much.
Okay. Item number seven, consider a resolution naming Chondrell Singfield as the Open Records Officer for Spalding County.
Motion approved.
I have a motion to approve, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
She's second, Quinn's second.
Ms. Quinn. All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Four zero, motion carries, thank you. Consider appointment of a twenty twenty-three ACCG Legislative Coordinator to represent Spalding County.
Is, is that a board appointment or a chair?
It's neither. We've just been, in the past, we've just voted on who wanted to be the, the liaison.
Clay wants to do it, I just didn't know if we procedurally, if we did.
All right.
I nominate Clay.
Okay, I have a nominee, okay, I have a second. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Four zero, thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, another one, yes.
Now, if they had it at Great Wood Lodge, maybe.
Yeah, yeah. Consider request from Three Rivers Regional Commission Council on aging to renew the contract for services to Spalding County resident, Dr. Ledbetter.
So this is our annual contract for the renewal of these services. Ms. Carmichael, do you have anything to add for the contract?
No, I don't have this time.
All right. And Ms. Jeannie Brantley sent this over for consideration and staff is making recommendation that we approve.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve an agreement of a contract for FY twenty twenty-three with Three Rivers Regional Commission to provide services through the council on aging.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Four zero, motion carries. Consider request from the Griffin Judicial Circuit Public Defender's Office to renew the contract for indigent, indigent, indigent. I'm gonna get it out, defense sec, uh, services for the Spalding County Superior Court.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Doug Smith was unable to join us this evening. He is attending the Public Defender Conference in Athens. Uh, this is an annual contract as well and staff is making recommendation that we move forward with approval for the contract.
Uh, motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion?
I do have a ques, so the circuit public defender is the public defender for the state, state of Georgia.
For the Griffin Judicial Circuit, which is-
For ours, so Fayette, Spalding, Pagan.
Fayette and Spalding.
And we have one assigned full-time here.
So who is the agency that does our indigent for, what was their name? Jenkins and something and something?
Jukes, Jukes Law Firm?
Uh-huh, they're for, another firm.
That's, that's their first state court.
This is the Superior Court. This is the felonies, not the-
Okay, this is a serious hearing. Got it, got it, I understand, okay, that's all I have.
The, as somebody who used to work in that office, the amount of work these guys do is unbelievable. You know, the state court, they do two thousand cases a year, but there's, you know, speeding tickets, it's DUIs, it's kind of the, you know, same ten things over and over. Felonies are, each one, I mean, I, I can't tell you how many trials these guys get handed, you know, huge child molestation cases, huge murder cases, huge, I mean, like, over and over and over. And it's these people's constitutional right to have, you know, a defense attorney. And just over and over and over, these people have to go in and like, you know, not only see the discovery, which I wouldn't even wanna do, um, but, you know, defend these people's rights in court. Uh, it's a heck of a job. They do a fantastic job. Uh, it is a, it's a merciless job. Every time, every month's calendar, they, they expect you to say you're ready on two hundred and seventy trials. And that, in private practice, we might be ready on two at any given moment, you know? And they expect these guys who, who don't make what we make in private practice to be ready on the most severe of cases and be ready on hundreds at the same time. And so for, for what we get and what the citizens of Spalding County get, like, these guys are, are killing it for us. So I just wanna say, we should, we should definitely approve this. I hope that they ask for more money. Back when I worked there, their budget was so low, uh, when the heater broke in the winter, we had to bring in our own space heaters and use duct tape to use trash bags on the doors because there weren't doors to try to keep our offices warm. Like, that's how low their budget was.
I feel so sorry for them because they're lawyers. I'm just sorry. I used to work in emergency room and blood and gore, it's no worse than being a lawyer. Okay, I just can't, I'm sorry for them.
No, I'm there, but I mean, like, I mean, when I was there, I had seven hundred cases a year, uh, and I was only part-time. These are all felonies, these are all people that could go to prison for the rest of their life.
We agree with you.
It was incredible what, what these people do for what they do.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Four zero, thank you, motion carries. Item number eleven, consider requests from the community development to enter into a contract with the Civic Plus for the Civic Gov software for permitting, planning, licensing, code enforcement, and fire life safety inspections. Dr. Ledbetter.
Our staff has received many software, uh, had, we have reviewed many software platforms and all, uh, all the staff have agreed to request the commissioners approve this request. Uh, the money is available through our current budget, it's already allocated and we would ask for you dat, uh, for you guys to consider and approve this request.
Um, so, I don't see anything that tells me how much it is.
Seventy-four?
Is that on there?
It is.[1765.41] It is.
Are they the ones already doing it?
No, they are not.
How long is the contract?
It wasn't in the brochure. Uh, it was seventy-four, three ninety-six, I think is what the total was.
Is this an annual contract?
Here it is. So, the. Wind time fees for the first year, the total was seventy-four thousand dollars, yes.
So, so, um, I guess my, my first question is, when we had, um, what was the other one we had? Hmm.
City Tech Sages.
In Spalding. Then we, we used to have, um, what is it? The one that T J had.
Yeah, it's, it's the In Spalding app.
Facility Dude.
Facility Dude.
Facility Dude.
Yep.
So, so is this, will this, um, service be accessible like Facility Dude was for the regular citizen to call in because a tree fell down or?
See, click, fix. Yes, ma'am.
So, um, and then I wanted to know how much we were paying for Facility Dude.
It was incorporated into the contract with Charles Abbott and Associates, and it was a substantial amount of money.
Because I, I was thinking, I thought we had Facility Dude before Charles Abbott.
Yeah, we did. Facility Dude is separate, uh, and I do not have those figures readily available. I apologize. I will get those to you.
Mr. Chairman, my only issue with this is that, um, it reference, this, this brochure, which is more marketing, references a master services agreement and the link is a broken link. You can't get to that master services agreement. So, I have no problem with you approving it, subject to my review of the master services agreement.
Uh, we agree with that wholeheartedly.
Um, yeah, I really just want to know the numbers. I mean, you know, in terms of, and you can tell us that later, but, yeah. You know, seventy thousand dollars a year is, is a lot.
That, that was for the first year. The second year it goes down. Second year is forty-two thousand dollars. The first year is, uh, monies allocated for making the transition from the current software package to the new software package and making all of the links work.
And the contract is not a multiple-year contract?
It is not. It is a year-to-year contract, just as it is with, um, the other Munich Code contracts that we currently have. We have Civic Rec that takes care of our rec department. Uh, we have, um, Civic Plus which takes care of the notifications to our community through the fire department. Uh, and this will also be through Munich Code as well. This is a Munich Code product that our staff has reviewed considerable times.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, whatever it is that we do, we need to make sure that it's, it's user-friendly for the, for citizens. Because people have a hard time, they, you know, they, they try to call their commissioner, they're trying to call this person and that. Um, but if there's a centralized repository for complaints, uh, citizens' complaints, then it's easier to have it distributed. My other question is, all the Facility Dude complaints went through public work. How will this work? And who, what will be, what will be the gathering place? And then how will the information be dispersed to everybody who is?
That's one of the great things that I've seen about this product is it affords us the opportunity to have, uh, conversations across departments. So, the information that Community Development puts into the software, uh, the water department will actually be able to access. Code enforcement will be able to access, um, permitting, business license, all of the information goes into one data source repository that all of our departments will have access to. The click, the see, click, fix, uh, will afford us the opportunity to mass distribute the information for issues such as potholes in the road or, uh, trash on the side of the road.
Okay.
And we can actually put the commissioners on the distribution list for your district if you're so inclined to receive those. All right.
No, uh, that's below my grade. You want them to tell you every time you got a pothole?
They already do, that's right. Let me tell you, when they call, I go, there's this great app that you should use. Take a picture of it. They will get back to you in twenty-four hours.
Okay, so, so.
It's the same call.
We have a motion?
We do not.
So, I would like to make a motion that we approve the, I'm reading. Uh, the request from Planet Community Development to enter in a contract with Civic Plus for their Civic Gov software for permitting, planning, licensing, code enforcement, and fire life safety with the stipulation that Stephanie is able to get in and figure out what it is in the contract that the master plan is supposed to be.
Review their master services agreement.
What she said, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Four zero. Item number twelve. Consider recommendation from the Parks and Leisure Services Advisory Commission to approve the motor coach policy with wage increase for drivers. Dr. Ledbetter?
Uh, this time I'd like to recognize Kelly Carmichael.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak on behalf of, um, our senior citizens who are ready to hit the road as soon as the motor coach gets here. Um, we're anticipating it should roll offline in August. Um, there will be a little, um, time for, um, wrapping or whatever, labeling and signage on the motor coach. So, um, looking forward to that getting here. We, we're working on the motor coach policy. Um, you have it before you, and, uh, the prior policy was three dollars a mile for users. Um, with the fuel costs, diesel costs increasing, um, we want to make sure we're not operating in a deficit. Um, and that the users that enjoy this vehicle, that they, um, pay for the usage of the vehicle so we can keep it rolling. Um, so we, in this policy, you'll see, um, that there will be a, a calculation done, uh, for each trip. It'll be, be based on the mileage. It'll be based on, um, number of days. Um, we are quickly realizing that the pay rate for our driver, um, drivers is currently at sixteen eighty per hour. And, uh, we only have one active driver who has his own business as well. And so as his business is picking up, he's less available for us. Uh, we've had the application, um, or the job request out for several months now with no applicants with motor coach experience. So, we're in a catch twenty-two with a new bus coming, new motor coach coming, and limited availability of the current driver. So, this policy, I've done some figures, um, the, I've done a few sample scenarios.
This is inside your budget. Okay, yeah, this is inside the budget that we've already approved.
So, so it is not the, the driver's.
The driver's.
Rate is not.
The driver wage is not.
I would just like to say that we did a check in the community and drivers make from twenty-two to thirty-two dollars an hour. And we, we've got our most precious cargo, our citizens in that bus, and we're gonna trust this individual to drive them hundreds or maybe a thousand miles away and keep them safe. I think we need to, you know, be able to pay people what they would be getting. That's why we can't get any drivers, because if you can go and drive somewhere else for thirty dollars an hour, why would you come and drive for us for sixteen dollars? So, that is, that is the biggest problem, um, that we have for the bus, is not being able to have anybody to drive it.
And not only is this individual driving a, um, brand-new motor coach, five hundred thousand dollar value, uh, their duty is beyond just a regular motor coach operator. They're an employee of Spalding County. So, that increases their level of responsibility on these trips. The fee structure of, um, also includes a maintenance fee of two hundred dollars per day to recoup, uh, what has been budgeted for maintenance. Um.
How'd you come, with, how, how did we come up with that number, Kelly?
I based that on the estimated number of days of travel that they would have in a year and divided that, um, into what they've budgeted, what T J has budgeted for maintenance, to try to recoup that.
So, so in the first year or the first couple of years, we should not have any.
We shouldn't.
Extenuating, um, maintenance requirements because.
Right.
Um, it's a new bus.
Right.
So, it is.
So, there would also be additional, um, maintenance runs. So, if there is no trip, I mean, this bus is gonna have to roll. So, if there is no trip one week, the motor coach operator would take the motor coach out and run it and keep fluids and such moving. So, that is.
Part of that maintenance.
Part of that, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, on the, on that page we were showing, it was saying the number of hours times twenty-eight dollars for staff.
Yes, the twenty-eight dollars includes, um, benefits for part-time.
And, so, so the twenty-eight is the wage plus benefits for the driver?
Yes, so we're proposing twenty-five dollars an hour plus part-time benefits.
That's a, that's what I got as a public defender, by the way.
Okay. Any, any other discussion?
I can share a little bit more with you that will help you understand how affordable this would be for the traveler. Um, so based on these figures, um, a one-day trip, two hundred miles, the total trip cost to the county would be six hundred and two dollars. Fifty-five passengers, eleven dollars a person. That's very affordable travel.
So, so I know that, that we, we didn't budget for it in our budget, but we do have money in our contingency. How much would it be?
Um, that, you're talking about the difference in wage in a year? I don't, I hadn't prepared those figures.
So, the guy that is the driver now, is he a public work employee or a parks employer?
He is a sixty-one oh-two employee, so he re, he reports to Lauren.
Mm-hmm. But he's from another department, basically.
Hmm, not at this time.
Okay, so he's a sign of alarm.
T J has some drivers, uh, that work in his department that will pick up if, if there's an issue. And maybe a driver gets sick, they can pull in, but they have motor coach experience. But it pulls them off of their duty.
Well, I, I mean.
For parks or public works.
When you, you look around at everything, the way things are, you know, people were going crazy because they got a five-dollar-an-hour pay raise and now ground beef is five dollars a pound more than it was then. You know, and I think that we're doing a pretty good job trying to keep, keep our salaries comparable. We're just way below on this one. I mean, this is not just you driving the bus. You're being responsible for other grownups. So, but, uh, other than the fact that I would like to know what that difference would be, because we have to know how much money we want to ask for in contingency to cover that. I don't have a problem with the two hundred and fifty-dollar maintenance fee. I don't know what anybody else is, is, is saying, but, um, obviously, we, you know, it costs us when we crank it up and get somebody to move it.
Dr. Ledbetter, talk to us about finances, financing?
So. It, it, it's, it's early in the year. We're two weeks into July. One of the things that the board asked of us was to take the contingency fund and split it equally across our districts. So, if we're gonna take this from, uh, the contingency fund to make up the delta between our current pay rate and the proposed pay rate, then, um, would the board consider taking it out equally across all? Uh, since this is a county-wide opportunity, uh, and if so, then yes, there would be monies in there. I'm just not sure how much additional funds would be in the contingency. We would have to bring that back to you.
Ms. Gwen, are you paying for all this out of your contingency?
Right.
Okay.
So, only people from my district can ride on the bus? That's how y'all gonna do? I'll be glad to take that in my car.
Okay, all right, um, the, the funding doesn't grow on trees. We're gonna have to figure that out. And the only place we've got, we can control willing and truly is out of the, uh, our contingency, out of the commissioners. So, we'll have to figure that out and see what that looks like, uh, to be able to do this.
Don't they work about fif, no, don't they work about fifteen hundred hours? No, it's six hundred hours. The part, part-time people work about seven hundred hours a year?
Regular part-time's twenty-nine hours a week, so it's right around fifteen hundred in a, a year.
Okay, so, so the difference is sixteen, nine dollars, twenty-five, ten dollars, just round it off?
Mm-hmm.
County manager's working it, Jessica.
It's roughly three thousand per commissioner, out of your contingency.
Uh, y'all can do what y'all want to, but I'm not gonna have all these people, these senior citizens, come getting at me because they can't drive the bus because they don't have a driver.
So, we're taking it all out of, we're taking it all out of hers? Okay, yes. I agree to.
I think you should probably wait, we don't, we have a commissioner that's not here, okay, so I think you should probably wait and let us respond to you individually.
Oh, that's, since it's coming out of contingency, that's a good point. He's not here.
He's not here, and we're speaking for him.
I suppose it come out of.
And you're figuring that money based on him being here, so that's the right thing to do.
Okay.
I said you wouldn't, I'm just saying.
So.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about contingency, like specific.
Um. Say it across the board, so.
Yeah. I, I don't have a problem with that. Y'all been holding on to everything else without Ryan.
Well, this is, this is pretending, this, this is your, his money.
Yeah, yeah, but this is, this is a.
So, can we, can we?
Table?
We can ta, I would say let's table the.
Salary increase?
Let's approve the policy.
Okay.
Um, and, and table. So, my motion would be to improve, uh, approve the policy, recommended by Leisure Services for the motor coach. And do I have to make a second one? Yeah, that's one thing. Okay, that's my, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Four zero.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion now to table until the next meeting, um, the decision to, uh, to, to increase the, the pay for the mo, motor coach driver until we have all the specific information about what it's actually gonna cost towards annual salary.
All right, I have a motion. You, both of you okay with, okay? And I have, uh, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
With all commissioners being present at the meeting.
Yes. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Four zero. Motion carries. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Twelve A.
Twelve A. Consider request from, uh, Community Development to enter into a contra.
No, no, twelve A is the.
Excuse me, wrong piece of paper, excuse me. Consider recommendation from Park and Leisure Service Advisory Commission for a task order form to perform an engineering study of location and determine the cost of possible pickleball court expansion. I'm gonna lift it from the table, and this is from the June twenty meeting.
Motion to lift.
All right, I have a motion to lift. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, I have a motion to lift in a second. Uh, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Four zero. All right, uh, discussion. I think Lynn's pretty well laid it all out for us in his, uh, written statement, so there shouldn't be a whole bunch of, uh, additional stuff. Uh, you know, the amount of times that we have had, um, streaming, ESPN streaming from, uh, in Spalding County, I can count on one hand and count on one finger, I think, really and truly, to do that with. Uh, I think that, uh, uh, the return on investment, uh, is pretty powerful. Uh, I think that, uh, uh, people learning about Griffin by coming here is, uh, also very, very powerful. All right, uh, do I have a motion to, I make a motion to, uh, uh, approve the, uh, engineering study? Do I have a second?
I will make a second for the purpose of discussion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, we have a lot of stuff going on, and I, and I get it, you know, that this is a, a hard-rolling thing, pickleball. But we have some major projects that were Splosh projects that are not completed. And most of them have gone up three or four hundred percent over what we cost. I just, you know, maybe to some people, twenty-seven thousand dollars doesn't look like a lot, but when you don't know how you're gonna finish four major projects before you can ask somebody for more Splosh money, I just can't, I can't do it. I think that, that. I think that that's a great idea, but I don't think that it's ready at this point. I would love to see them try to find some additional funding. But, um, you know, this is, pickleball is not in our, our master plan. Clearly, it is a big issue. But, you know, my suggestion is that, that it is placed in our comprehensive work plan, like our CIE. And maybe if there's an opportunity for funding through impact fees, then we may be able to look at a match. Or, um, with the same data that they gave us here, I don't know that that's not something that G. BSTA can't do. But I just, at this point, I, I, I just don't feel like, I could, I mean, I just can't, I can't support it. I mean, I, I, that's, that's suicide for me, because I got people who still wanna know why they ain't wet yet.
Bring it down tomorrow morning.
You know, and, and I never thought the idea of the tourism, uh, GSPTA being a potential funding partner for that, because that seems to be a little more.
They're the biggest gainer from this.
You know, where the money should, should go. I just don't know if using property taxes at this point, like you were saying, you know, to use, to go toward the expansion, or like you said, because we've got other SPOLOX projects we just haven't completed yet. Um, let's put the cart in the horse, and I just don't think that's probably what we should be right now.
I, I just looked at, after reading who you brought us tonight, I just looked at the other golden ticket locations. Grand Rapids, Michigan has a fifteen courts, none covered. Uh, New York City's in Flushing is at their tennis, uh, center that is the host of the U.S. Open. So whereas I'd love to compete with the side of the U.S. Open, I don't, I don't think anyone expects us to really do so. Uh, Mesa, Arizona, uh, however, does, they have, um, forty-one pickleball courts and a two-thousand-seat, like, champions court, which is super cool. I, I do think we should look towards building a, a champions court with like, for the, you know, the big rounds. That would be the one that gets televised, that kinda stuff. Um, but I also looked at attendance numbers. Right now, registered for the tournament that's happening in September, we have six-hundred-and-ninety-nine players right now. The Chicago Open has two-hundred-and-eighty-seven. Uh, Alabama, one forty-five. Sacramento, one thirty-six. Uh, New Jersey's, uh, five-hundred-and-seventy-six. Philly, three sixteen. Uh, Cincinnati, again, their big court, has eighteen, uh, with none covered, even though we have eighteen and four covered. Um, has even less than that. Uh, I don't see a, a bigger venue than what we've got. I do think that we should continue to grow it. I do think that we should continue to, especially the championship court. I love this idea of having one. Uh, I'm not sure how the land next to our pickleball court's got designated to wetlands, uh, which is gonna increase the cost of this, but, um, I, I, I like that idea. Again, we turned down soccer two years ago. Was it two years ago, maybe, three? For like twenty-five thousand to build wells so that they would, their grass would stop grime. And this is twenty-seven, just for the study. You know what I mean? Like,
Yeah, it don't happen.
I just, I don't, I don't think that we're there with the funding. I, I think, uh, yeah, and I, I, I think we should certainly come back and say, hey, there might be something that we can do as far as the actual project, but like, just relying on the county, I don't, I don't know if we're there yet. Uh, like I, and I'm, I'm, again, I'm looking at the other tournaments going, seems like we're better than just about all of them. Uh, uh, again, except for.
Mesa.
I mean, Grand Rapids is playing, they start tomorrow, but then they only got fifteen courts. They got fifteen total courts. And then none of them are covered, you know, in Michigan. Like, that means they can only play a couple months of the year. It's Michigan. Uh, you know, I, I think our courts are amazing. I think they should be expanded. I think they should go there, but I don't know if, if it's just should be leaning on us.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Three zero.
Sorry, Clay. We love you guys too.
One, three. Okay. Uh, where am I at?
Thirteen.
Reading? Consider the first reading, an amendment to a resolution amending the Code of Ordinances for Spalding County Division One, Laws of Local Application, Part Two, Governing Administration, Chapter Three, Elections, Section Two Point One, Board Established Dist- uh, Districts. Dr. Ledbetter?
Uh, so, check me if I'm off. Uh, this is an ordinance where last month we replaced section P.
We added a new section P.
That's correct. We added a new section P last month. This ordinance, the board asked us specifically to go clean up all of the language preceding the new section P. And that's exactly what the county attorney has done. So, um,
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Stephanie. This was a whole lot of cutting and.
This, this should, um, keep us from having to redo this every ten years when there's a new census.
We love that answer. All right. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Four zero. Thank you. This is a.
Good job, Stephanie.
Yes. That was really big time, and I appreciate it. Uh, item number four, direct the staff for forty-five days to work with the city of Griffin staff towards completion of the SDS and lost renegotiation with frequent updates to the board.
So our recommendation is that you direct us the, uh, the staff to go work with the city for the next forty-five days.
I'm not paying attention, but I'm gonna make.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, um.
This is a follow-up to the.
Right, but this is just us officially saying we wanna do.
Correct.
Motion to, uh.
It's already been made.
Okay, I'll second it then, since I was talking.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this?
Uh, I, this is, I mean, just having heard what, how we're negotiating, like, it's, it's all cards on the table. Hey, we'll give you everything. And then they go, yeah, but we also, and you go, wha- what? Like, I, I don't understand. It's like the big shit with my three-year-old. I don't get it. I don't get it. Like, I mean, we're using the GMA rules, right? We're using ACC rules. You know what I'm saying? Like, yeah, we'll, we'll play by yours. Yours says it should be this. No, we want more. What, what?
My grandson says, I don't know what the answer should be. That's pretty much where we are.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Four zero. Thank you.
I love my three-year-old. I love you too.
All right. Item number eleven, report of the county manager.
Thank you. Lost renegotiations and service delivery strategy. That's the first up this evening. Uh, thank you to the city of Griffin, the city of Sunnyside, the city of Orchard Hill, for attending the meeting Friday to discuss our local option sales tax distribution allocation. We have lots of work in front of us before December thirtieth deadline. As you know, the county and the cities are required to renegotiate our distribution allocation within two years of the census. And when we agree to our allocation distribution, we must submit our request, uh, for a new certification, um, to the Department of Revenue. Additionally, our work to complete our service delivery strategy is intertwined within our renegotiation. We have lots of work to complete within the next few months, and I am thankful to our cities for supporting these efforts. T-Splost. The initial, uh, crew was not our scheduled crew assigned by our contractor, C.W. Matthews. You know, they've been working out on the west side of our county for the last week or so. They were a, uh, a separate crew than the one that we are actually being allocated by C.W. Matthews. But we received that crew because they were in-between jobs and our crew was not available yet, so they gotta, C.W. Matthews gotta jump on our, um, resurfacing. If you've not been out in the area of Creekwood Drive, West Ellis Road, Landing Way, or Quail Creek Drive, please do so. Uh, I've been very impressed with the work that is going on over there. The contractor will move our, um, assigned crew into the county, uh, this week, at the end of this week. And the contractor, it will create a logical sequence for their scheduling, uh, to reduce the number of moves that they have across the county. So after West Ellis, we expect the contractor to move to Rover Zatella or Bicycle. Uh, we are working with C.W. Matthews to share with the community the locations so we can all plan our travel accordingly. And if you're not watching our social media sites, Deandre's doing a fabulous job of making sure that, um, we've got that information available to us. Uh, next on the T-Splost list, uh, Brian Upson is sitting in the audience this evening, and we are working on the concept, uh, completion plan for Carver Road sidewalks. That will be the first sidewalk that we're looking to bring and put in front of you. That, that work should be finished probably the first week of August, so we're, we're working to get that to you very quickly. The three roads that are, uh, sorry, the three areas for sidewalks, uh, include Carver Road, North Hill Street, and East Griffin to M. Bucks. So stand by, there's a lot of work going on in the background to bring that to the table. The nine-eight-eight hotline, uh, people experiencing a mental health crisis have a new way to reach out for help in the U.S. starting this, that started this past Saturday. They can simply call or text nine-eight-eight. For more information, please visit the nine-eight-eight Suicide and Crisis Lifeline by visiting their online site. Um, there's a lot of information out there, so we would encourage our citizens to go and visit. So if someone in your family or a friend is in need, you know where to point them to. There's a mock disaster training event scheduled for July the twenty-seventh. Spalding County Emergency Management, Spalding County Fire Department, uh, our great sheriff, uh, in the sheriff's office, uh, Griffin Police Department, Griffin Fire Rescue, and Wellstar Spalding Regional Hospital will conduct a mock disaster next Wednesday at their, at the Carver Road Fire Station. Please note that traffic in and around this area may be higher than normal, and there will be significant emergency vehicle traffic to include helicopters in the area. This exercise will appear real, and you may hear loud noises and sirens and actually see smoke and fire in the area. Please don't be alarmed. This is actually a training event to make sure that our, uh, first responders are working at the highest level of service for our community. There's a back-to-school open house scheduled for Thursday, July the twenty-eighth, from three PM until seven PM. And all Griffin Spalding County schools, um, will be open during that time, so please go and visit. If you've got students or grandkids that are in the area, it might be a good way to see, uh, their school and, uh, meet their teachers. Uh, COVID-nineteen has caused our senior center to return to mask and social distancing. So please, uh, be aware that if you go over to the, the senior center, that they're gonna ask you to put your mask on while you're visiting. Uh, comfort stations. Spalding County and Spalding County Homeland Security will provide, will be providing comfort stations that will be used to assist with heat relief for residents in our community for the month of August. Fairmont Community Center and City Park Community Center will be the comfort station locations. And these stations will be open Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday from three PM until nine PM, and Saturdays from ten until five PM. Um, if, uh, if you need a little bit of assistance, please reach out to our senior center, and they will be able to provide you with additional information. Beat the Heat. Join us as we kick off our Beat the Heat back-to-school events with our partners, Hammond Services and Spalding County Fire Department, beginning this Friday, July the twenty-second. Be sure to bring your favorite swimsuit and towel, towel, as you enjoy the steady and cool stream of water from a fire truck hose and refreshments and games. This week, the fun-filled event will take place at fire station number one located at six-hundred Carver Road. Please bring your family and friends, and, uh, we'll rotate around the county for the following three weeks. We're gonna do this over the next four weeks. Um, please watch our social media sites for locations and times, and also note that, uh, we will not hold these events if there is inclement weather. So come and enjoy the, the events with our fire stations. Last week, our Community Development Department participated with our Parks and Recreation Summer Program for a Box City Event where our younger neighbors helped us understand what they would like within Spalding County, what they would like to be when they grow up within Spalding County. In short, our children want safer neighborhoods, streetlights, wider sidewalks, parks, pools, and trails. They also, uh, our Community Development Team also asked, uh, the kids what else they would like. They indicated that they would like water parks, splash pads, playgrounds, and walking trails. My takeaway from this exercise is I need to do a better job sharing with our community about the twenty-seven parks within Spalding County comprising of three-hundred-and-twenty-five acres of active parks and four-hundred-and-nineteen acres of passive parks. Our citizens engagement team will all, uh, and all of our employees have lots of work in front of us to make sure that we deliver to our children the types of places that they want to live, work, and pu- live, work, play, and retire for Spalding County. And we're excited about that opportunity. It was a good event. We've got really good feedback from our community uh, as a, um, response to the work that not only our Parks and Recreation Team are doing, but also for, from our Community Development Team. Thank you very much.
Did you mention the Aquatic Center?
Oh, yes. That's actually on the, I, I didn't turn the page. Uh, please join us tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. We are going to have our groundbreaking ceremony at the new Aquatic Center off Rehoboth Road. So, uh, State Route sixteen, go over from here, uh, eastbound over the two, um, railroad crossings, turn right on Rehoboth Road and follow the signs to the event. Uh, please join us. Everyone is invited to participate in tomorrow's activities, and thank you very much for reminding me.
Commissioner Johnson?
All right. Uh, Chairman, I'll let you talk about the archery's mini-retreat in August. Um, question for the county manager. So, any code enforcement warrants that were previously issued? I mean, are we, are there, are they still in the books? I mean, are they still being handled, or what happens with those?
They are. Um, Ms. Carmelita Brent is working code enforcement, and we are pushing those through the, the system. I have had conversations with Judge Rita Kavanaugh.
Good. Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, I re- I really hate that, um, both Lynn and Peter kinda left early. I guess they probably weren't happy with us right now to receive, to get that vote. But, um, I hope that they did hear what we had to say, that, you know, maybe through other additional funding that they can get the monies that they need to go and put there with their study. I mean, it's not that we, we don't feel that there's not a tremendous return on investment in pickleball. They've proven that. But if we just believe that, you know, the funding can come elsewhere and the priorities are just not right, right now, and right, and, and not there, since we do have other, uh, SPOLOX projects that we're trying to complete. So I hope that they understand that and they get that. And maybe, Chairman, that could, that could be communicated, um, you would do that as well.
Yeah, GSPTA.
Um, let me see, I hit something else here. There's some handwriting here. GSPTA. Um, I, I love the idea, Steve, that you were just mentioning about the kids and, and what, you know, what they would like to see Spalding County is, is live, work, and play, and they're mentioning those splash pads. Um, you know, I think that's something that we, that we discussed, uh, we probably need to do. Brian, I'm sure you listened to that as well. So hopefully we can actually make that a reality for these kids sooner than later.
Yes, ma'am.
With the Aquatic Center being out, doing that report, we need splash pads in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's it.
Well, okay. Commissioner Flowers-Taylor?
Yes, one of the things that, um, Kelly mentioned in the sheet that she gave us after this little exercise with the kids that, that were in camp is that the kids also want stuff to do in their neighborhood. So they made it, I think that she would say that they made it very clear that as kids, they just can't go from one side of town to the other, you know? So, I think it's, it's, it's very eye-opening just to see, I, I made the comment, these are the same things that the parents want. So, so clearly there's something, um, you know, a method to the madness. Um, I'm very proud of our fire department using the, uh, creating these stay-cool shelters. Uh, most people can make it up until about one o'clock. They don't have air conditioner. But between one o'clock and eleven o'clock at night, it is blistering. And, and, you know, I don't know if people can walk from their house to the reg center, but if it was my choice to sit in the heat or go and sit in the air conditioner, I would walk. So as long as we're making those available, uh, to people, we know that August is gonna be really, really hot. It's projected to be hot. It's already been hot. Y'all know that. Um, we may save some lives, because, uh, babies and old people like me are very subject to dehydration. And, and this, you know, this weather is conducive to heat stroke and a lot of other things, so.
Drink water, folks.
Very proud of them for doing that. Um, I drove on Amelia Road last week. I meant to call TJ. Very nice job. Um, I, I think he said that. Um, I, I think he said there was one mistake or something, like a ding in the road where, um, I don't know, something heavy drove on it before it got dry. But anyway, no dust coming up behind me. I'm looking out at my rearview mirror, totally different road. The only concern I have is that the little ditches that were on the side of the road are only this deep now. So somebody needs to go out with a ditch opener upper or whatever they got to do it. And open that up so that water will be able to run and not settle back up under that. So um, I'm looking forward to seeing how that holds up and, you know, with some help, hopefully, we will be able to, um, there'll still be dirt roads, but there'll be dirt roads under some stuff. It won't, you know, won't be such a problem. So that, that was a real good job, and of course, I'm waiting to see how that works out down the road. Um, animal shelter. I cannot tell you how much it makes me, how good it makes me feel and how proud I am to see how well we are advertising our animal shelter. Um, the lady Carol Jones who was here asking about the no-kill shelter just for the general public. In order to be a no-kill shelter, you have to not euthanize more than ten percent of your population. And we have been under that for at least, I think, the last three years since we really changed our ordinance. Um, so yes, we are trying to make sure that that is a, a family shelter. I, you know, it, it, it makes me feel good when I see families and kids and people who are single coming in and getting them a cat or a dog or giving somebody else a forever home. And, and, and I mean, if there is anything that we can do to help facilitate those relationships and help our shelter out, we should do everything that we can. So I just wanted to say that the animal shelter staff is doing an awesome job. Um, I did, uh, the behavior health meeting that I went to this past week talked about the rollout of nine eight eight. Um, I don't even remember where I was when they started, rolled out nine-one-one. But anyway, that was so long ago. But it is the same thing. It's the same thing except for this is for mental health. And we want people to know that when you call that number, there is gonna be the understanding that there's a mental health crisis going on somewhere. And we're hoping that uh, by doing that, we will stop a, a lot of accidental deaths, a lot of um, situations where more criminal acts are, are, are done while somebody is having a bad mental health day. Um, I think it's very, very important for us to recognize that mental illness is an illness. It's not a moral dilemma.
Yeah.
Um, and if you had cancer, you would be trying to go to the doctor and get that fixed. So if you've got mental health issues, you still need to be trying to go to the doctor and get that fixed. So um, I just think it's so important that we do have this resource now, and hopefully, this will help a lot of families um, to keep down the trauma that's associated with people being off their meds or having episodic, manic episodes that um, end up with them in jail. Um, I think that's everything I, I had to say. Um, I'm glad we got part of the ethics ordinance fixed. Um, I know we still got some stuff to work on, but it gives us the groundwork we need to move forward. Um, and hopefully, none of us will get an ethics complaint, but we know that that can happen. And now we have something that we can kind of stand on that people will be able to understand. That's all about, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Vice Chairman?
Brian, y'all got one of those ditch opener uppers? We're gonna need it, Adam. No, I, I don't, honestly, seriously, and I wanted to echo what you said about mental health. People come in my office all the time with an untreated mental health issue that has got them in my office.
Mm-huh.
And they go, "Well, I don't wanna be on medicine" or whatever. Man, I, I'm low on vitamin D, and I got no problem going to taking vitamin D. If, if my doctor prescribes me a medicine, there's nothing wrong, like my, my body produces too much of something or too little of something. God has blessed science with the ability to, to help us with that. There is no shame in doing the same thing for mental health reasons. None at all. And we need to remove that stigma from just the world of, hey, man, it, it, do whatever you gotta do to be where you should be.
Right.
Um, uh, I, I just, talking about our animal shelter right fast. Um, I, I got to be the, the lucky one who had the time that day when we were told. Uh, and, and help me, if I get the name of the association wrong, it's the, the Association of Physicians of Indian Descent.
That's correct.
Came and donated us three thousand dollars in a check because uh, towards the Spain Uter stuff, um, uh, it's, it's really, it's been noticed in the community how well the animal shelter over the last few months, the transition from before to now.
Mm-huh.
Um, in fact, that day, there was a, a state official there who, you know, does tours and looks into animal shelters, and sh, her glowing praise, she was just dripping with how awesome the staff is doing, how great our animal shelter is, and that she's seen over the last few months that change happen, and that she now uses the Spalding County Animal Shelter as the example for how other animal shelters in the state should be. She goes, "You gotta come." They've taken people on tours here and said, "You should do it like this. Clean up your act and be more like Spalding County." And like, that's incredible from, from where we were to where we are.
Mm-huh.
Now, are we perfect? Absolutely not. Nobody is. Boy, we wish, you know, everyone would do what they should in Spain Uter or Dog, and we would, you know? But um, to be used as a statewide example by the officials that come in and, and certify these places, that's, that's huge to me. Uh, and it's being noticed by the community. I mean, you know, people don't just hand you three thousand dollar checks 'cause they think your hair looks pretty, you know, like. Um, going into GSBTA, I, I think that'd be a great source for the pickleball. I'll mention that to them. Uh, if you want to uh, put that in their ear from, from your side, I'll put that into their ear from mine. Um, the same thing with splash pads. I know, Brian, to call you out again, we had you guys look at costs of splash pads, but that was, of course, before the lovely uh, waiting list that we're all now on for concrete and stuff. But the, those costs were only high if we needed to build one from scratch.
Right.
If we could attach one, say, to Fairmont, we wouldn't need additional bathrooms 'cause they could use Fairmont. We wouldn't need a check-in desk 'cause they would check in through Fair. You know what I mean? There's ways to do it, and that neighborhood, I think, is, is primed for one. But there are other neighborhoods that, but...
Everywhere.
Well, if I could put splash pad everywhere, but um, that said, uh, I, just going down my list here. People were, uh, I know they've been hitting Ryan, but they've been hitting me up as well, uh, probably 'cause my, my parents, oh, my mom still lives on uh, um, uh, West Ellis. "When is West Ellis getting repaired? When is West Ellis getting repaired? When is West Ellis getting repaired?" And now that West Ellis is getting repaired, they're like, "It's taking too long. Why is West Ellis not repaired yet? Why isn't it, why aren't you done?" "Man, I, we're doing what we can. I mean, we're trying." So um, you know, we're sorry that it, it, it takes so long. We wish we had a magic wand to just go, "Now, this is repaired." But um, until they invent one of those, uh, or, you know, those wizards from Harry Potter, let us know about them then.
Yeah.
Um, I do wanna share some really good news, some really cool stuff. Uh, the Fourth of July Parade was uh, uh, I think, a huge success. Um, and I posted it online, but I wanted to, to tout it again tonight. Uh, we really did have a, a, a great parade. There were a, a couple notable exceptions, uh, a couple notable uh, absences, I should say. Uh, first, let's talk about best public group. I hope he's uh, received his blue ribbon, but the Sheriff's Department won first place as best public group. They left before I could get to them, but of course, the, hopefully, back to the parking lot. Hopefully, that tank didn't have somewhere else to go. But uh, they always show up big, and we appreciate that. Um, Spalding County Fire Department uh, got second place in public group. They also showed up big. Um, and to be totally transparent, that, they're also my son's favorite. So uh, it's hard to beat a fire truck for his three-year-old. Uh, and third place was the City of Griffin Fire Department. Uh, best civic group, first place was VFW Post eighty-four eighty. Uh, they also had some state uh, VFW folks with them. Uh, they, they showed up big, too. We really appreciate that. Second place was the uh, Daughters of the American Revolution in their fifty-seven Chevrolet. And it was, that was a beautiful car. Uh, and third place was the Shriners. We didn't have the huge Shriner outpouring that we had for the Christmas parade, but they still showed up and uh, drove their golf cart. So we appreciate that. Best spirit uh, was Veterans Affairs. They had uh, two floats ready, but they only ended up using one. They expected more veterans to show up to just come and ride, but they, they fit all on the one. Um, the second place and best spirit was the Griffin Ward of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. I think they were the biggest walking group. Um, followed closely by the third place best spirit group was just a family that showed up. Uh, Linda, I'm gonna butcher their last name, Linda Schmutzler family. That's how it's spelled, so...
Schmutzler?
Yeah, they, they wanted me to get the spelling right, so. Um, that said, let's go to the, the best in show. Number one, hard-to-be a, a cute kid was for uh, Southside Pagents and uh, their pageant winner. She was gorgeous in her dress. Um, but once again, we wanna tout ourselves here. Uh, second place was Spalding County Public Works with their new equipment and stuff that was out there. Uh, racking up some miles, but it, it was great. The city, I mean, the, 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 the folks really, really loved seeing it. And number third, of course, was Spalding County Parks and Leisure. So I think she might have already taken off, but uh, we had a, we had a, a really great time. Uh, we will be conscious of working on the pacing next year. It was uh, it was a bit of a sprint uh, at times. Uh, we're gonna need some walkers to, to head the parade next time so that we can slow down the pace a little bit. Um, but I do wanna call, and, and I'm, as a Kiwanian, I wanna call the Kiwans out. There wasn't any, there wasn't a Kiwanian float. There wasn't a Rotarian float. There wasn't an Exchange Club float. There wasn't a Civitam float.
You gotta tell them to march.
So, well, exactly. Like, we're gonna, like...
Was there a Lions Club float?
There wasn't. There wasn't an Elks Club float. There wasn't a Odd Fellows float, you know? Uh, but, you know, these, these big groups, you know, we, if we, if we really got everybody involved, we wanna do, just like we're doing the Christmas parade, a big pass-around trophy that everyone gets their, their name and organization engraved on as we move it back and forth Stanley Cup-style. So um, that said, now that that's passed, we're looking forward to the Christmas parade and then the Martin Luther King Parade, and hopefully, the June 20th Parade after that. And we, we'd love to help uh, any way we can with all of those. Uh, it's really the downtown route that's really making the difference, like the Route of a Volunteer Park.
It really is.
Boy, that downtown, though, is, where, and the folks that come out. I've talked to a lot of the downtown business owners, and all of them say, "Man, we get a hu, we get a huge kick in business that day." It's like the second Saturday thing. Like, we love it when they show up. Uh, so uh, Sheriff, Sheriff might know, uh, that first responder uh, training. Uh, me and my brother have done this before, gone and volunteered to get all made up as victims. You guys still looking for any, 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 any trauma? Uh, uh, it's not, it's not a far leap. I just, see these bags under my eyes. It's trauma.
I wanna be motor vehicle crash.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's fun. You get to go, "Oh, my side." And then, look, you gotta sign all kinds of waivers 'cause they might put you on a, you know, evac helicopter or whatever, or you're strapped down going, "I hope this is safe." Uh, no, it's really fun. Uh, that, that's all I've got tonight. But I'll, if, if y'all, seriously, if y'all need, uh, that'd be cool.
Yeah, you don't play dead that good. You'll be talking too much.
Mr. Chairman, before you, you finish your remarks, our county attorney asked me if I would share that there will be a public hearing July the twenty-sixth at six P.M. at Southside Baptist Church regarding the utility moves for our new airport.
Oh, yeah. July twenty-sixth.
July the twenty-sixth at six P.M. at Southside Baptist Church for the utility moves for our new airport. Thank you.
Anything else in the... Okay. Reminder that uh, we've got workshop uh, before the pro, uh, planning and zoning meeting. We've got the uh, Archway uh, semi-annual uh, elected officials basically meeting uh, coming up on ten August at two o'clock. Uh, this is a time we will update all the, basically, the elected officials uh, on what's going on. Is this a...
Senior Center? Where's that location?
Yes, Senior Center. Yes, Senior Center. Yes, it is. Um, for the elected officials, this is really the time to get to know what's going on inside of Archway. Uh, so everybody knows that uh, I, I feel the pressure for inflation on our citizens, and I am planning on leading the fight to reduce uh, millage rate this year. Uh, so you'll see me start uh, pushing that along as we go along. It's gonna happen in a few months. Uh, for the last two months, we have had, the last two years, we've had the same millage rate, and I plan to be a cheerleader and leading that fight. Um, lastly, uh, now for a personal observation, uh, we've had the uh, county manager for uh, eleven months, and uh, I couldn't be more pleased with his performance and couldn't be more pleased that how lucky we are that he has continued to stay with us uh, and hope that he will continue to stay with us in the future. All right.
Here, here, here.
Could you verify the time of the archway's retreat?
Just to say, I think it's two o'clock.
I think, is that...
What's, what's the date?
The twenty-second, is that...
No, I think it's ten August at twen, at twen, at uh, two o'clock.
Okay.
I have a whole bunch of people looking at their...
That's correct.
That is correct. It is at two o'clock.
And it's not at the Senior Center. It's the UEG, UGA Extension Office.
That's correct.
Ah, that's right.
Eight thirty-five Memorial Drive from two until five is how it's listed.
Okay.
And if you have anything that you would like to be discussed at that retreat, we're having an initial planning meeting on Monday morning, so you could let um, Clay or I know before Monday.
So if you're interested in specific topics that you're gonna be updated on, and uh, that's the time to be able to do that. All right, uh, with that, uh...
When the, the work session and zoning, is this Thursday or next?
It's next Thursday, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
That's, okay.
All right. I'll, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and leaving your seats.
Y'all, I mean, it's over. Girl, oh my god, yeah. I don't know how y'all do it. Y'all people go to work.
We don't know either.